Good afternoon. I wanted to call to order our Hamilton County Board of County Commission meeting, our legislative meeting, I should say, for December the first, and we're going to get started. If we could just introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Felicity Jordy, Communications Manager.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeffaludo County Administrator.
Charlie Anis Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Summeradumas, President of the Board. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have a nice crowd like this. We're going to get started. We have a lot of things to cover. And I don't know whoever comes to our meetings and I hit my gavel after a year and a half of trying to find my gavel. I found my mayor at Forest Park, and I was also the magistrate for court in Forest Park, so I'll be using it for another month and a half or something. So that's why I'm just so excited that I found it. So it doesn't sound as good as the other. Here, you can hold this one.
I know. Now you got two gaps. Wait a minute. Uh-oh.
We're in trouble. Okay. So I would ask that you have, on our agenda, we have a silent prayer, and after we have the silent prayer, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just ask that Dr. Odell Moreno Owens passed just recently on Thanksgiving Day. And so if we could just say, just think about him and his family and what they may be going through, and also the impact that he had on this county. So just for a few minutes, please. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I was just thinking, I want to be correct when I mentioned about Dr. Owens' passing on Thanksgiving Day. I just wanted to make sure it was the right date. It was the day before. Thank you so much. Wanted to correct myself. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And we have several very important presentations from Cradle Cincinnati's Champions for Change. Do you have your, Vice President Reese, you have your thing here? So I just want to welcome everyone who's here. Infant mortality is an issue that no organization can solve alone. Collaboration is essential to make things better. And so over the past several years, Cradle Cincinnati has seen Hamilton County unite around a common goal, which is to reduce infant mortality. In that spirit, Cradle Cincinnati launched the Champions for Change. They are awards to honor leaders who went the extra mile for moms and babies in our community. This year, we're thrilled to recognize 11 such champions. Because of the champions like these and countless others, Hamilton County saw a record-low infant mortality rate in 2021. Oh, I just wanted to say. There is so much work, more work to be done, but we come together today to honor the hard work and progress of our community. We'd like to thank these champions for their compassion and innovation in helping moms and babes thrive. We'd like to begin by asking Cradle Cincinnati's Executive Director, Dr. Meredith Shockley-Smith, to say a few words.
First, I'll just say thank you for having us on the agenda. To Commissioners and the work that you do to support the work that's happening on the ground. I also will say thank you to the community partners that we work with. Again, as the President said, it is not us who does this work alone. It is a collective impact, and that is why we are seeing the numbers we are seeing in Cincinnati. And so I appreciate that, much of which is centered around Black women who have gathered together to really push hard at the disparity issue. So I will also say, lastly, that the individuals here today who are champions in this work go very hard in very specific areas. And so I want to say personally, as the Executive Director, that I appreciate you and the work that you are doing, and say congratulations to you. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you. With that being said, when your name is called, please stand. And here are the years, this year's awardees. First up is the Safe Sleep Champion, which is an individual working to promote safe sleep for babies in Hamilton County. Remember, alone on their backs in a crib. Our Safe Sleep Champion is Lakeisha Green, Home Visitor. With Every Child Succeeds, Lakeisha Green is extremely passionate about the health and safety of our first-time moms and babes, and this includes safe sleep. She uses every available teaching tool and resource to help families understand the importance of safe sleep while also recognizing the individual and cultural needs and challenges that new moms have. Through her experience supporting families and partnering with peers, Lakeisha realized that safe sleep needs to be discussed and taught frequently and free of judgment and shame, allowing first-time moms an opportunity to share openly about the barriers and challenges with implementing safe sleep practices. That's led to more open, honest discussion about ways to improve safe sleep for infants and newborns. Congratulations, Lakeisha. I was a supervisor at Every Child Succeeds for about four years. Yeah, so a long time ago, a little while ago. Now, up next is the Champion for Smoke-Free Women, an individual who empowers women to quit smoking and/or advocates for smoke-free communities. Our Champion for Smoke-Free Women is Tika Reynold. Tobacco Treatment Specialist with TriHealth. As a tobacco treatment specialist, Tika helps moms-to-be cut back on quit or quit smoking. One of the key risk factors to preterm birth and infant death. Quitting smoking isn't easy, and Tika works hard to connect with her patients on a personal level and support them in every way she can, including following up with them between appointments to see how they're doing. Her patients truly love her and value her advice. While she is fairly new to her position, Tika has found her footing quickly. In recent months, she's started expanding her services to include both Good Samaritan and Bethesda North Hospitals. Congratulations, Tika. And so next, we have Community Health Worker Champion, a community health worker who walks side-by-side with moms through pregnancy. Our Community Health Worker Champion is Nicolene Acosta Zamora. She is a certified community health worker with Cincinnati Children's. Nikki has been described as being patient, caring, and very understanding by the families she works with. She is very open-minded when it comes to families and social barriers they face. Nikki has worked with Hamilton County Job and Family Services, Every Child Succeeds, Santa Maria Community Services, and Legal Aid to help families through poverty, food insecurities, housing issues, and sexual abuse, as well as support the undocumented immigrant population. There are just a few of the disparities that Nikki has had to face with moms and babies. It can sometimes be very challenging, as well as emotional, but Nikki puts her best foot forward each time and goes above and beyond to help find a solution to every problem. The role of community health worker is not always easy, but it is worth it, especially when you know the positive and everlasting impact that you make on families. Congratulations, Nicolene. Now, Vice President Reese is going to present some.
Thank you. I do want to join my colleagues in congratulating Cradle Cincinnati. And I just can't believe that I'm actually here where we're actually giving awards. I remember we were trying to get the issue of infant mortality on the radar at the State House, and I know Commissioner Dreehouse and I, it didn't exist. And to be here today, to know that the numbers are down, but certainly we want the numbers to go to zero. And to be here now as Commissioners and being given awards for the service, so it just touches my heart. And I want to thank you for your work on infant mortality and also your work on the next step, which is Black maternal health. So thank you all for that. I have the honor of presenting the Champion for Better Care, which is a nurse, midwife, medical assistant, or other provider who cares for women during their pregnancies. Our Champion for Better Care is Heidi Sullivan. Heidi Sullivan is a social worker for TriHealth. Since joining TriHealth in September of 2019, Heidi has facilitated centering or group prenatal care classes at Good Samaritan Hospital, as well as provide full-time social work support to patients in the mom/baby unit in ICU and ICU follow-up clinic at both Good Samaritan and Bethesda North Hospitals. Her extensive 20-year career of providing social work services to vulnerable patient populations, specifically underserved women and children, make her an excellent candidate for this award. Heidi is a strong advocate for change and leads others to find innovative, cost-effective, and patient-focused solutions to the challenging social detriments that so often create barriers for women when assessing health care. She has a warm and caring energy, and her patients trust her expertise and follow her guidance because of the strong bonds she forms with them and their families. But what really defines Heidi as a Champion for Change is her relentless focus on expanding access to social services as a part of the routine women's health care, either through formal care management or informal connections to resources. Heidi understands deeply that health care is more than just medical intervention. It's about treating the whole person. Ladies and gentlemen, please give it up for Ms. Heidi. Thank you. Next will be the Community Activist Champion, and we have three. And I would ask them to all come forward, and then I'll read their background. Gail Foster. Jamaica Gilliam, step right up. Jaleah Oglesby. Did I say that right? Jaleah? Jaleah not here? Okay. Okay. So let's start with Ms. Gail Foster. FIMR interviewer with Hamilton County Public Health. Where you at, Ms. Gail? Come on, step on up. They want to know. They want to see you. I haven't lived in color. Dominique Walker nominated her, nominating her, saying, "To know Gail is really to love her. She works hard to interact and build relationships with moms and families who have experienced a fetal or infant lost in our county." Gail brings with her years of experience from job and family services and a mom herself. As part of her process as a FIMR fetal and infant mortality review interviewer, she reaches out to families to establish and build relationships and offers them a chance to share their story. Gail is not only a wealth of knowledge and great community resource to the families, but she is also a gentle, listening ear with no judgment as they share what one would think is the most vulnerable and devastating moments of their lives. During the transition to hybrid and primarily non-face-to-face interaction, Gail has continued to diligently accommodate the families to meet them where they are. The switch to less in-person activities has been hard on everyone, but Gail has continued to put the moms and the babies first and adopt and adapt to the best way to serve them. Ladies and gentlemen, give it up for Ms. Gail. Next is Jamaica Gilliam. Did I say it? Jamaica, okay. Jamaica Gilliam, Neighborhood Navigator at Hamilton County Public Health. Helping, encouraging, and empowering pregnant and postpartum women is her passion, and it truly shows. In her role as Neighborhood Navigator, Jamaica provides education, support, and referrals to resources to pregnant women in need of assistance. But those who know Jamaica know that she wears many hats beyond the Neighborhood Navigator. She is also a doula, lactation counselor, and Executive Director of Black Birth Circle, a nonprofit focused on supporting, educating, and advocating with and for Black birth workers through community events, workshops, and continued education. One of Jamaica's strengths is creating supportive communities, whether that's for breastfeeding moms, Black birth workers, or Black women in Hamilton County. Her focus on and drive for improving Black maternal health makes her more than deserving of this award. Please give it up for Ms. Jamaica Gilliam. And I believe Jaleah Oglesby is unable to be here. So do we do it like the Oscars? Jaleah Oglesby is unable to be here, but we do expect this award and her honor. Thank you.
So next, we have Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We're thrilled to have such a large crowd for such a good occasion here this afternoon. I too want to congratulate all of you that are on the ground doing the work. It was said at the beginning, I want to repeat, that we had record-low infant mortality rates in 2021. Congratulations on that. That is the reason for the season, right? It's because of your hard work that we're able to talk about those kinds of stats. I do also want to say that I know our predecessor, Todd Portune, had a lot to do with Cradle Cincinnati and infant mortality work in the county. And I do want to recognize that he was a huge champion of all of the work that really started when he was on the County Commission. So I have the privilege of announcing the Champion for Knowledge Award, an epidemiologist, researcher, or student working to better understand the complexities of infant mortality and preterm birth. The Champion of Knowledge is Carissa Rochelot, Ph.D., Reproductive Occupational Epidemiologist for NIOSC CDC. So Dr. Rochelot has worked as part of the Occupational Reproductive Health Team at the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for the past 13 years. In her primary role as lead epidemiologist, she regularly consults with workers and employers to reduce hazardous occupational exposures during pregnancy, including postpartum nursing for working mothers. One of the major challenges in occupational reproductive health is emphasizing to health and policy organizations the importance of work or occupation in a mother's life, both for her health and for the health of her baby. Dr. Rochelot has spent many years advocating for the collection of occupational data for pregnant workers to improve their working conditions and the health outcomes of their babies. She has successfully obtained funding for the inclusion of occupational exposure information in the CDC's Pregnancy Risk Assessment Monitoring System, the Birth Defect Study to evaluate pregnancy exposures, and the Nurses' Health Studies. In addition, she has led efforts to increase health communications and generate awareness of the importance of occupational health and safety during pregnancy among workers, employers, OB-GYNs, and occupational health workers. Carissa's unwavering effort to translate research into usable decision-making tools and resources in pursuit of partnerships with most respected sources of information to pregnant workers have had a tremendous influence on the state of information being communicated to workers who are concerned about the impact of their work on their fertility and pregnancies. Congratulations to Dr. Rochelot. The next award is for the Home Visitor Champion. And this, oh, this year we have two awardees in this category. First is Ann Wilburn. Is Ann here? All right. Well, I'm just going to say that Ann is a family support worker at Santa Maria Community Services, and we thank her for her work. The second is Shawna Knox Mayberry. So Shawna is the Family Development Specialist with Best Point. Shawna is a driven and motivated Home Visitor Champion. She creates a positive culture of health and support for moms, caregivers, babies, and entire family units in Hamilton County. Shawna proactively and creatively works with each individual client to tailor the curriculum to their individual goals and needs. She does a great job of not only listening to each family, but actively problem-solving towards setting and achieving their goals. Families not only view Shawna as a respected home visitor professional, but also as a true advocate and confidant. Shawna has specifically exceeded in working with caregivers with cognitive and/or developmental delays. She has a unique delivery of services in which she can meet the clients where they are while continuing to challenge them in a positive way. Shawna remains patient, yet motivating with her clients, allowing them to remain encouraged to set goals and actively working towards their goals. Congratulations to Shawna. And I believe this is the last award. It's the Champion for Equity, going to Roosevelt Walker. He is not here, but I do want to note that he's Obstetrics and Gynecology Specialist, Fetal Care Center for TriHealth. So congratulations also to Mr. Walker.
So we're going to try to get a picture of all of you. If you can come up here right behind us and stand, that would be great. out. And I have several cards. If you want to speak, be sure to fill out a card. Okay. My first name is Marilyn Wall. She wants to talk about MSD.
Can I speak as part of the MSD public hearing?
Well, I was going to say, we're going to have the public hearing. If you wanted to wait?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That would be fine. Next is Reg Dyke.
Dyke.
Okay. Very good. Welcome. He wants to speak on housing.
Okay. Thank you. Housing in relation to the budget. My name is Reg Dyke. I'm with the Housing Justice Committee of the Democratic Socialists of Greater Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky. We have about 400-plus activist members, and I'm representing them here. As I looked over the budget, and I'll have to admit I'm relatively new to this, I didn't see that any direct tax funding goes to affordable housing from the county. They're responsible for money from the CARES Act and for HUD, but I didn't see tax money going directly to that. And I'd like to speak to that. I think we have a real crisis. I'm sure you're aware of that, of affordable housing in Cincinnati and Hamilton County. I recently attended a list seminar where they gave these statistics. There's a need for more than 40,000 units for low-income housing. I assume that means about 30% of AMI or average, yeah, average medium income, excuse me, that is needed, 40,000 units. And they also said, in addition to that, 60,000 units that are in existence, both subsidized and unsubsidized, need preservation and reinvestment. They're just crumbling. They're not good living conditions. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I would like to see the county more involved in that. Apartment complexes are being transferred, are being converted from low-income housing just into higher-income housing. These are private ones that developers are just wanting more money, and they can make more money. The latest one in the news was the Rose Lawn Apartment Complex, which some of the tenants, there will be an eviction court next week. So there's a real need. So I'd like to call on the county to take action to put money into affordable housing. One suggestion I have really quickly here is the transient occupancy tax. I think you're talking about extending that to longer-stay or like Airbnb kind of places. I think it would be great to use that money for low-income housing. Those, Airbnbs are useful, but they're displacing other kinds of housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. And I will assure you that this board is very adamant about affordable housing and the need for affordable housing. We're about 25,000 less than we need to be to meet that gap. And so as we look at the monies that are available for affordable housing, we leverage the ones that we can, like the ARPA money. And then as we move forward, we've done, allocated more than 40 million for housing. And as we move forward, if there's a necessity within the budget to add more, we certainly will. But we're going to leverage, I can't speak for everybody, but the board has decided we're going to leverage the monies that have come in that we can allocate for affordable housing. We have to spend that by 2026, dedicated by 2024. So it's on the forefront of our minds, and it's on our radar. So.
I appreciate you saying that.
You're welcome.
And I just want to add to that, too. The county, we put more than anyone so far. I mean, it's unprecedented. What we put in, and we put it in a multitude of ways to keep on going. But we also have community block grant dollars that this board votes for, home dollars, that we have to vote to say, can these dollars go to affordable housing? So I think you'll see a major, a major investment the next couple of years.
Could I just, quick comment, if all of that could be clearer on your website so that people would see what kind of action is being taken, that would be helpful. I know that's extra work, but it would be great.
No, I think it's great. We already are, by the way, President, we already have asked the administration, there's going to be an online. They're putting it together now. We're going to do a better job of marketing what we're doing. That's in this budget to help us be able to make it easy for people to see how many units are we affecting, where it's at, and those kind of things. So that is something that we're hoping to get going in 2023.
Again, thanks.
Yeah, certainly. And it makes no sense for us to know, and the people that we're working for, the residents, they don't have the clarity. Did you want to comment at all? Okay. So next, thank you, sir. Lisa Mertz.
there's gonna be an online, they're putting it together now. We're gonna do a better job of marketing what we're doing. That's in this budget to help us be able to make it easy for people to see how many units are we affecting, where it's at, and those kind of things. So that is something that we're hoping to get going in 2023.
Again, thanks.
Certainly, and it makes no sense for us to know, and the people that we're working for, the residents, they don't have clarity. Did you want to comment at all? Okay, so next, thank you, sir, Lisa Mertz. She wants to talk about recovery and treatment. Welcome.
Well, this is intimidating, isn't it? My name is Lisa Mertz. I serve as the CEO for the Addiction Services Council. For 73 years, the Addiction Services Council has been providing treatment services for substance use disorders in Hamilton County. We serve the most vulnerable citizens in our community, and the vast majority of those we serve fall below federal poverty guidelines. We provide the core treatment services needed for these individuals and their families to find recovery and a second chance at life. I'm here today to advocate for our treatment agencies and to respectfully request that settlement dollars, One Ohio Settlement Dollars are used to support the agencies that provide these core treatment services. Sometimes, funding for treatment services gets forgotten when funding is prioritized for new programs and support services. We forget that without the Recovery Foundation built through treatment, none of the ancillary programs we fund, like recovery housing and criminal justice initiatives, can be effective. Treatment agencies, especially the ones like ours, are finding it difficult to continue to provide treatment services to those in need because we can't continue to absorb the costs of skyrocketing wages and operating expenses without additional financial support. We were told in 2022 that many of the ARPA funds would not support treatment agencies because the One Ohio Foundation funds would be available. Every day, our AIM team works with individuals seeking treatment, and there are never enough beds available for immediate access to treatment. I watch people having to stay in temporary homes overnight waiting treatment beds, and I don't want any lives to be lost because treatment services were not accessible due to lack of funding. I respectfully request that you remember how important core treatment services are for our community and that you dedicate funding for these services, the intended purpose of the settlement funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your comments. And I think you will be happy as we look at the one-stop group that's working on dedicating all the money that's coming down yearly, and where we're looking at prevention, treatment, beds, housing. I think you'll be satisfied, I don't know, completely satisfied, but we are looking at those treatment options, how important they are. I don't know if you want to speak at all?
The One, as you know, the One Ohio Group is meeting. We have a foundation locally, a very diverse, very big foundation, and so they are working hard to make sure we're hitting the mark with the One Ohio Funds. Thank you.
Just don't forget us, that's all I'm here for.
Well, you can't allow us to forget.
I'm right here.
Okay, if you're providing resources and services, we don't want to forget you. And we normally don't go back and forth when people comment, but we're just really, this board is just really active, really invested in our people and the residents. And so as they come up, we want to let you know, because I don't know when I'm gonna talk to you again, what we're doing as a board to make sure we meet the needs of the people that are in the community.
I appreciate your candidness.
Shale McLennan, Cat House?
Hi, my name is Shale McClellan, the CEO at the Center for Addiction Treatment, better known as the Cat House here. Our vision is bold, recovery for all who seek it. We want to thank the county commissioners for your support of CAT over the years and for our mission of saving lives and rebuilding families and communities. For over 52 years, CAT has been a cornerstone of recovery in Cincinnati. Funding from the county ensures that most in need have detox and recovery services available. Over the years, CAT has treated individuals addicted to alcohol, crack, heroin, methamphetamine, presently is on the front lines in the opioid epidemic. During COVID impact, the COVID epidemic, CAT remained open and staffed. We're here today to ensure that the One Ohio Settlement Dollars are used to support the agencies on the front lines who have treated the members of our community, who in large part were victims of the opioid crisis created and manufactured by the pharmaceutical companies whose very funds created the One Ohio Foundation. We were told in 2022, as my colleague just spoke of, that ARPA funds would not, many of the ARPA funds would not support substance use disorder because the One Ohio Foundation funds would be available in the near future. Well, that future's now, and the cost for our agencies to cover the wages and basic operating expenses have greatly increased. And there have been no increases in Medicaid rates for over five years. So our population at below poverty level. We do not have commercial insurance. We, our folks are the folks that no, other folks won't serve at Cat House. We don't have an increase in our revenue, and the Mental Health Recovery Services Board funds match those of Medicaid. So as the cost for nurses and for all of our employees has gone up in this competitive environment, our revenue has not increased. So these funds are extremely important to make sure that our beds are available. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, Jeff Capel? Yeah, I see that you did. Well, if you can get it in two minutes, either both of them, you can talk about both of them. Okay, so then, go on to PTR then.
Good afternoon. I'm here to encourage support for Commissioner Reese's legislation to grant the full property tax rollback. When the stadium tax passed in 1996, which its backers insisted would only go 20 years maximum, they did promise that 30% of those revenues would be rebated back to homeowners in Hamilton County. And the promises that are made to Hamilton County residents should be considered just as valid as the promises that were made to the Bengals and the Reds and anyone else in there. This stadium deal has been absolutely fantastic for the Bengals, the Reds, Jeff Burden, and Bob Beddinghouse, but it's been really bad for the rest of us. That property tax rollback has been the one good thing about the stadium tax that has benefited residents. And so we should do every single thing possible to try to keep that. Now, keep in mind, when the stadium tax was being debated, along with any time we're talking about public funds for stadiums, its backers came forward with one of those economic impact studies which predicted that there would be massive economic benefits and job gains and tax revenue gains because of the stadiums. Now, unfortunately, 100% of the time, those so-called economic impact studies are proven to be false. They are known as the junk science of economics for a good reason. So if we, if you're gonna say that we don't have the money for it, let's remember why. We got misled by bad economic impact studies, and we simply need to quit reading those things as if there is anything valid about them. So in closing, I do again encourage that we pass Commissioner Reese's legislation to keep the promise to Hamilton County residents. And if there's an issue with that, let's keep in mind the false promises that got us to the point where you might say that we don't have the money for it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, there is no Alicia Reese's legislation. There's information that's coming to the board to make a decision on what level PTR we want to pass or not pass. So each commissioner has the opportunity to say how much, and so, but that's fine. I just want to make it clear, there's no specific legislation by a specific commissioner. It's, there's a recommendation by each commissioner, but not the legislation. Neil Tillo?
Bottom of the president, I just want to say, each of us, we do introduce resolutions. So different times we'll have resolutions that'll come forward. So just wanted to update that, because I know there's resolutions that each have. I know you have one coming soon as well, that we do put forward. So just wanted to let people know that we are allowed to bring resolutions.
Right, but we didn't do one for the 30.
Yes, I did. I have one on the calendar that I introduced. It's a by leave, but we haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Uh huh, Neil Tillo?
Right, I'm the CEO at Talbert House, and I'm here, like my colleagues, to talk about the need for the settlement funds to flow to the clients who need them in the community. We've done a great job here at the county in getting new money in from the federal government and identifying more and more clients who can be helped. And the whole, the ARC and the Office of Addiction Response here at the county has done a wonderful job. Those clients all flow back into the community though, and they need to be served in the community. And we need to make sure there are proper resources for clinical counseling and treatment, as well as for prevention programs. So I'm just here to ask you to please make sure that those funds that you have direct allocation over in the county budget can actually come back to community organizations that serve our citizens. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Okay, those are all our comments right now, other than for the budget hearing. So I will move forward. Comments and motions by commissioners, I'll get started with that. Just to say a few things about the activities that I have been involved with since we last met. So I had a broadband study update that was a Zoom call. We had a group, a company to do assessments and surveys within Hamilton County to find out where the gaps are as it relates to broadband activity and usage in our county. And it was a very good update, and what, it told us what we needed to do. The gaps were not as bad as we thought, but there are some areas that have no access and some that have lots of carriers in their area. And we'll be talking more about that, where we want to go with the broadband study. The study is over, but the county needs to decide how we're gonna deal with the results of the study. And then on the previous Sunday, I attended a activity, they called it Hear Our Voices Town Hall. And so it was at a church, Kennedy Heights Church, and they talked about, well, it was very strategic. They had all the drill teams dance, it was somewhat of a contest. But also, they talked about their needs for transportation and to be able to pay registration fees and to have enough money for uniforms, which is something I brought up to the board, that there are a lot of small groups that are struggling to try to help these young people with their mental health. And just having activities, surveys have shown that being more active decreases your depression rate. And so I thought it was excellent that they brought me there, and they told me what their needs are, but they're one of many, many, many in this county that we need to help, that are actually helping with this, the results of the pandemic, and trying to provide services to them. So I talk with them, they have my information. And I think we need to look at the sports groups, not only the drill team, the sports groups, any kind of active groups that are having our young people stay out of trouble. And I hear all the time about, there are things that we didn't think of before, we've never done before, but that's a great thing. We need to think outside of the box. And as I was thinking about doing new things, there's something that I read, I'm a reader and I research. It said, there are those that look at things the way they are and ask why. Some of you know this. I dream of things that never were and ask, why not? So really, as I move forward, even as a commissioner, as I move forward, I'm gonna look at, oh, we used to do this, we used to do that, we can't do that. And I'm not gonna ask permission to do it, but I'm gonna present it to our group to see where they are on it because we need to do things a little different because our environment is different, our children are different. And we need to move forward and just be open to creative ways of doing things. So I am committed, and I put this in my budget also, I am committed to make sure that these small groups that are trying so hard and don't have $200 to go to a tournament, that there's some way we can validate their existence and what their needs are. And we, as a county, can help those groups to make those children better. I'll move on. I had a webinar on affordable housing with Holly. As I said, we committed over 40 million on affordable housing, and she broke down for me, which we were pretty clear about that, where that 40 million is going to go. I'm really excited about the allocation that we've done. I'm part of the visit since the executive committee meeting, I had a meeting with them on Monday, and they're talking about their impact on the hotels and having conventions come in. And things are going up. When I say things are going up, more people are coming, more conventions are coming here, more people are coming to Hamilton County for leisure activities, so that's a good thing for our county. There was a press conference on yesterday, Lincoln Heights. We gave 975,000. The board had a grant process. They finished very high and were selected as one of many communities to receive $975,000 for infrastructure, for road repair, for playground equipment, and we're very proud of them. They did a great job, and we're looking forward to allocating more monies to other communities. Okay, I had an MSD meeting with Holly yesterday, and that was also a Zoom meeting to talk about MSD, and they'll be presenting in a few minutes on their budgets, very informative. I had a meeting also yesterday with Director Patton of Job and Family Services. And I'm looking for, as we think outside the box, looking for some way for us to incentivize our adoptive and foster children to be able to experience the things that, not normal, because they are normal, experience things that other children have experienced. Like, my first thought was a Taylor Swift concert. Oh, and the tickets are like $800 a thousand. And I know in their mind, they thought, I'll never be able to go there. Well, they're not going this time. But we were, it made me think that they need to be able to experience the same things that children that have a two-parent home or whatever have experienced. And that we need, if we have the money, and the money is there in Job and Family Services through the levy, we have the money to be able to provide them the opportunities and excitement and the cultural experiences that they deserve to make sure that they can do the same things. And so I, they're thinking of a name now. I said Beyond Your Imagination, I thought would be good because we need to have these young children and some young adults start to dream again and to believe that no matter their situation, they can be all they can be. And so that's the purpose, and my colleagues will be hearing more about that. And the Director of Job and Family Services is really excited about the opportunity to do that. I met with Prosecutor Joe Dieters today, had a great meeting with him. I also met with Reddy, Kim Lotterbach, and they're doing some great things in the community as it relates to economic development. And then Steve Leeper, I just met with him as it relates to the Convention Center Finance Plan because we're looking very closely on the monies that the county may have to spend, looking very closely at the concept of this Convention Center Headquarters Hotel negotiation. So that will end my report, but I just want you to know, the residents that are listening, that we're gonna do and continue to do all we can do to meet the ones that are less than, that don't have the same opportunities, that don't have the same maybe level of income, and that we have not forgotten about you. We, last year, well, it was this year, we had a large event grant program. And so we gave 1.6 million, 1.5, to the Black Music Festival and also to Blink. And those are large events, and that's great. But what about the small Lincoln Heights Festival or the Blue Ash, Red, White, and Blue? Why can't we help them? That's not too small, but there are a lot of small ones in Mount Healthy. And so I want us to help the little guy. And so I'm gonna be speaking in behalf of the little guy and the big guy because we need the big guy to make the economic landscape prosper. So we need both, and we have to remember to, I know I'm going on and on, but it's okay with me because these are things that I want the residents to know, that we're focusing on them. And so we're gonna be looking at the big guy and the little guy, and how we can help everybody, and how they can help themselves. Because basically, if you feel better about yourself, you do better. And so, and if you're getting assistance, you'll do better. And then we won't have to help as many people. So that's where I am, and that ends my report for now. Vice President Reese. I usually have a short report, though, yeah.
Thank you. Just hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I had a pretty tough one. As mentioned before, getting the news that Dr. Odell Owens shockingly passed away. And I had just been with him and his wife at the Men of Honor event, and there were a lot of people there. But it was just amazing that... there were a lot of people there, but it was just amazing that, it was very dark in there, but to be able to see him and his wife and take what would be the final picture that we have together. Dr. Odell Owens, which we'll hear more about later, but I wanted to say, he was someone that, when we talk about the American dream, when we talk about the dream deferred, when we talk about what we try to tell young people, see, a lot of times we tell young people that, but we don't support the people that do it. So we tell them to do the right thing, and you can dream beyond your circumstances, and yes, you came from the projects, but you can come from the projects and you can go on and do big things, but one of the things that we don't do enough of is when the people do it, we don't put it up and keep it in a permanent way, so that others, another young kid can see it. This thing of being able to be born and, because we don't choose how we're born, but to be able to be born how you're born, but be able to overcome these obstacles, it can't be abstracted, it can't be a figment of our imagination. They got to be able to see it, touch it, and it has to be passed down for generations. And this, Dr. Odell Owens grew up in the projects where my mother grew up, and that's how the families knew each other and took care of each other, and my mother went on and passed away from breast cancer, but she went on and got out of the project, and she has a great story. But he would always be close, when my mother died, about all the things that, how my mother helped inspire him, and he inspired my mother, and my mother would always tell me, wow, look at Dr. Odell Owens, man, he came from right down here in the block where they had an incinerator. We had an incinerator, we talked about environmental justice, there was an incinerator that they had to take their trash to, and I was a grandchild of my grandmother, so I went to the incinerator. But he would go on and not only, I know sometimes when people are from here, we kind of limit them to here, if they don't decide to leave here. We only think of them globally if they leave. If you end up staying, we begin to localize and downplay your accomplishments, and we've got to stop doing that if a person chooses to stay here. But he was global, and there are children who are now adults because of him and his invention, but to come from the projects and go to Ivy League schools at a time when it was very tough to get in Ivy League schools, and then have an invention for couples who couldn't have children. At that time, if you couldn't have children, it's over, you just couldn't have them, not like all the things that they have available possibly today, other opportunities, but he came up and helped invent something that created life, and most people could just stop right there, they ain't got to do nothing else, it's over. When I think of Dr. Fauci and all them, I look at Dr. Odell Owens on that level, but he chose to stay here. If he had left, he'd probably be up there with Dr. Fauci and everybody, because of that one invention of life. But then he went on and he was committed to the community, and he did many things here, many firsts, elected officials, you couldn't look like us in terms of African-Americans, we elected countywide. When he was growing up, you couldn't even work at the county if you were not a bona fide Republican. My mother got the job and then was told, oh, you're not qualified now because you're not a Republican. So people like us couldn't even be here, and then he went on to win and bring people together of Hamilton County, Democrats, Republicans, independents, and got more votes than most of a lot of people at that time, and became the coroner. I think there was a little problem before, there was something with some pictures being taken, so the coroner, we had made some not good news, and they said, let's bring in some new blood, and Dr. Odell Owens came and restored the respect of that office. But he didn't stay in the office, he said, I got to go to the streets, I'm trying to stop the bodies from coming here. And I remember there was so much crime and shootings almost every single day, and I remember Dr. Odell Owens, I had this idea, I said, we want to do one day memorial, if you care about your loved one, that day ceasefire, and we had a press conference over where it now Walker Funeral Hall, and it's unusual, that the coroner, he said, I got your back, he was there, and we all came together and that day was no, not one shooting in all of Hamilton County. So he was one that, he wasn't waiting till your body came in, he was trying to stop the bodies from coming in, and it's just a major loss, because even with all those accolades, and you'll hear people, you heard the prosecutor talk highly, you've heard, of course, us talk highly, the community, he can go up and he can go down, the medical folks, he was more than a community leader, I want to clear that up. Just because you're, you go back to the community, you're not limited to just the community. This man developed life, there's people walking around right now because of his discovery and invention, we always honor inventors. America was founded with inventors, he was an inventor. And so when I got the news, I mean, it crushed me, because here's a man who walked high, but didn't walk so high that he couldn't be with the common people. Here's a man who never was ashamed of where he came from and wore it with pride, and you don't get people like this. I mean, you lose one, you don't replace them right away. This was a giant among us, and I'm devastated. I've been going back and forth, I mean, when people wouldn't take the shot, he was out there to try to help people understand it. He could talk the medical language and then break it down to layman terms so we can understand it, and I'm just going to miss him a lot, so I wanted to say that today, I could go on for hours, because his resume is so long that LinkedIn can't even contain it. But there will be a public viewing, 10:00 AM to noon, at Corinthian Baptist Church under the direction of Pastor Casey Smith, and it chokes me up, because his family, his wife, and when you hear the story of how he had the heart attack and his wife, you just want to keep him in prayer, and he loved his children, a father, we always talk about that, we got fatherhood programs, this man was a father, not absent, this man was a husband, not absent, this man was a role model. And so please pray for them, I can only, I know them very well, and they, it's tough, it's real tough, so, and to have it around the holidays, my mother died around the holidays, it just makes the holidays different. In addition to that, after hearing about Dr. Odell Owens, I got the news that on Thanksgiving Day, former Sergeant Handy Matthews passed away. Handy Matthews is one of the first African-Americans in the police department, he's very active in helping to diversify the police department, he was very active in being a mentor, he was kind of like a second father to my dad, he got kids out of the community and got them into baseball, that's how my father met them, to keep kids out of trouble, he was a baseball coach, he also did security for Dr. Martin Luther King when he came to Cincinnati, he did security for Oscar Robinson, at the time, we loved the big O Oscar Robinson, but there was a time when he got a lot of threats, and so he was security for him as well, he's a Prince Hall Mason, very proud of that, father, and even though he was older, it was very hard to hear him leave, he also was a math teacher, he went back in the schools, he loved the youth, and he was another role model, father, husband, community leader, and when we talk, this was all before we had the police community relations, he was doing police community relations before we had a word for it. So his funeral will be also on Friday, but at 7:00 PM, and it'll be at New Prospect Baptist Church, where he was a deacon, I believe, and on the trustee board, I believe, under the leadership of Damon Lynch III, Reverend Damon Lynch III, so people want to go there at 7:00 PM, I got a lot of funerals this week. If that wasn't enough, I got a call from Ms. Biola Brown, and Ms. Brown is a senior advocate, she is, was appointed to our senior board, elderly and senior board that she joined, she came and wanted to be a part of it, our commission encouraged her to apply, and she's on it. Her brother Luther Brown passed away after eating Thanksgiving dinner, watching a game, they thought he was just watching a game, he was dead. So that funeral will be next week, and then lastly, Tracy Dillingham, very good friend of mine, announced today her mother, who went in during the holidays and passed away, Patricia White, so I just ask to keep them and their families in prayer. On a brighter note, as President Dumas said, we were at Lincoln Heights, a community that has not had investment, has been overlooked and underfunded and underinvested in, and this board has said that we will keep villages, small cities, and make sure, and townships, and make sure they will not be left behind. And so Lincoln Heights received a grant of 750, 975,000, almost a million dollars. We also have Wi-Fi, will help them do economic development there, we also had affordable housing announcements there, and I think we've been very clear that no longer will Lincoln Heights and these other small communities, small cities, small municipalities, townships be left behind, and that was just a great event to be back out there, and the sun came out, and so we know we were on the right track when the sun comes out, so just want to give a big shout out to the work of Lincoln Heights, but also understanding that this is just no giveaway. They had to fill out paperwork that's thicker than some of the stuff we fund with the bigger projects, and they did it, and they did it very well, and I want to thank Mark and everyone that was involved with this, Mark and Holly and the administration under Jeff Aluto's leadership, because that was a historic day for this board and for Lincoln Heights, so we wanted to do that. I also met with, also attended the HBCU, Historically Black College and University Basketball Classic. It was a basketball classic, and they had Wilberforce and Fisk University come in, girls and boys, they had a college fair with scholarships, it's no secret, I want more of our kids here in Hamilton County to get scholarships, I think it's a college somewhere, somewhere that needs our students, and they have money and we want to get a hold of it, but it was good to see the kids, it was out at Winton Woods High School, and put on by On Impact Network, so wanted to thank them. They also honored my father, Dr. Stephen Reese, because many people don't know, he has an extensive background in sports and brought the first black college classic in 1986 to the Cincinnati Gardens, marching from Woodward High School to Cincinnati Gardens, and a lot of kids got scholarships in the band as well as the teams, and so this young man wanted to, Mr. Payne wanted to honor who started it and say that we're going to continue this effort, so that was very, very positive. I also had meetings with Reddy Cincinnati and was impressed with their inclusion grant program, and looking forward to us being able to get that information out more so that more small businesses can participate, and MSD, which we'll hear from in a moment, we had a good conversation, but as y'all know on the record, I am not for raising the rates, and so we'll hear about what can be done, and later on, you'll hear, I'll say more about the 30% rebate, because it all ties in. This is a very, very tough time, people are struggling like crazy, and anything we can do to give a break, I think is very important, especially considering there are some things we're facing that might be increases on the taxpayers. So that's where I'm at, and look forward to having the conversation, and sorry for all the bad news, but these people need to be, know that they, their lives did matter in this community and in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, I too wanted to mention the passing of Odell Owens, we all knew Odell, and I knew him mostly in his later years, I heard Odell speak many, many times at lunches and events that people attended, he was being recognized in this community by many organizations, and Odell had a way of speaking to this community and attendees of those events in a very direct way that made you think and question what you thought you knew, and that was the beauty of Odell, he was very direct, sometimes, and he knew this about himself, sometimes he would say things and it would ruffle feathers, and he did it on purpose, so that people would start to question, you know, their own health practices and what we are doing to try to create a healthy community here in Hamilton County. So I had a great deal of respect for Odell, I considered him to be a friend, and I know he will be sorely missed by this community for his frankness and for all the work that he did, that's been mentioned earlier, by way of creating a healthy community and a vibrant community for the citizens in Hamilton County. I did represent the commission on a couple of occasions over the last week, one event was the Violence Against Women Event, sponsored by Zonta, which is an international women's group that works to end violence against women in partnership with Women Helping Women and the YWCA, they had an event down at the CAC, and I presented a proclamation on behalf of the commission at that event. Also, Ronnie Luckinbill retired as the CEO of the Girl Scouts, and so we did a resolution for that, we all signed on and presented that resolution to Ronnie yesterday, and then, of course, I was also at the Lincoln Heights Impact Grant Celebration, very, very proud of this work, you know, we are able now in our budget to do these kinds of things related to community revitalization, the Impact Grant is the largest of those and meant to help a community that doesn't, these communities don't always have the capacity to get these smaller grants, because they don't have a grant writer, they don't have some of those underlying functions in their governments, and so there are eight communities that have been identified, and so this was the first Impact Grant that went out, thrilled that it went out to Lincoln Heights, which we all know is community on the move, and so I am looking forward to continuing to issue these Impact Grants to these communities to really help catalyze revitalization, as we heard, it'll be streets, it'll be tearing down the old high school and helping with the ball field, so it was a great celebration, I thought it was a lot of fun, and I think it's exactly where the county needs to be by way of partnership with our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just say a couple words about Dr. Owens, the last time I saw him was less than 30 days ago, when we were down at the erection of the Ezra Charles statue, and he spoke there, and I remember as we were kind of at the beginning, he said, I need to see you, I need to talk to you. Well, when Dr. Owens says he needs to talk to you, he's a wealth of information, as was said earlier, and so when everything got going, he talked and everybody dispersed, I said, I got to find him, and I ran, you don't want to see me run, I ran down trying to catch him to get a, just a crumb of his knowledge, so I certainly remember that, and he, I've known him for years, but that last time just was very memorable for me. In an effort to acknowledge him and his greatness, I will be forwarding next week to my colleagues a resolution to acknowledge his greatness and also a proclamation, and we will talk more about the resolution at another time, because we're in the midst of his funeral process, but we will be acknowledging very quickly, I'm hoping that we will, as a board, his greatness, so I just wanted to thank everyone.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got so choked up, I forgot another piece of history that was made, I want to give a congratulations, Congressman Hakeem Jeffries, who's a good friend of mine, was here in Cincinnati with Greg Lansman, who's now our congressman, Greg Lansman, but Congressman Hakeem Jeffrey made history, will be the first African-American leader of the House of Representatives in United States Congress, so I wanted to highlight that as well, and certainly looking forward to working with him and our congressional delegation to hopefully bring some additional funds. When he was here, I did give him a tour of the Black Music Walk of Fame and some of the things we got going in Cincinnati and Hamilton County, so hopefully they're familiar and remember us, but again, history was made with Congressman Hakeem Jeffries, first African-American to be the leader of the House of Representatives, representing the Democrats. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of go out of order before I go to our administrator, I would like to ask my colleagues, if you could agree to give me about two minutes to clarify something with our administrator and our lawyer, it may only take a minute, but I'd like to just... It may only take a minute, but I'd like to just take a two-minute break. We don't have to go anywhere, one-minute break for me to have clarity on the issue. Not you, you don't, you can't agree, but can I just make a motion to, for a recess? Yeah. I'd like to make a motion for a one, two-minute recess.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. So I make a motion to come to order.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. So we will move forward to Jeff Aluto, our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick comment and then a by leave item. So just wanted to, as Madam President, I think you indicated, just wish everybody in the counties, especially all county employees, a happy start to the holiday season and hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving break. In particular, I want to thank and express appreciation to all of the county employees who work over the holidays, especially work directly on the day of Thanksgiving, will be working on Christmas, our 911 operators, our employees operating the 241 Kids Hotline, corrections officers, and for that matter, anyone in public service who is working to keep all the rest of us safe and secure while we were going through the holidays. I just want to express that directly. We have many of them within the county workforce. So I just wanted to express my thanks to them. Secondly, I do have one by leave today. This is the by leave that was referred to earlier. This is related to the property tax rebate for the calendar year 2023. Madam President, I gave a substantive presentation on this back in early November. I'm happy just to provide a few comments just to tee this up, but I don't plan on going through a formal presentation. But just for folks who are watching at home and for, in the interest of transparency, annually, the county provides a property tax rebate, or what we call, if people are listening at home and they hear the words PTR, it's Property Tax Rebate, to residential homeowners in the county. The rebate is funded from the proceeds of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. The sale, this is, relates to the sales, the one-half cent sales tax that was approved by voters back in 1996, which paid for the two stadiums on the riverfront. It currently pays for debt service associated with those stadiums, pays for capital and operating expenses at both stadiums, also pays for pilot payments associated with the construction and the capital program of the Cincinnati Public Schools. This fund, the fund was originally supposed to support, as we went through in our presentation roughly a month ago, a PTR of approximately 30% of sales tax proceeds. But shortly after it was, it went into effect, we started to experience a slowdown in the growth of sales tax, which made that level of property tax rebate unsustainable. So each year, the administration provides a recommendation to the board on a PTR level for the subsequent year. There's never been, since we've gotten into this mode of there not being a way to sustainably afford a full PTR, there's never been a true policy on what that level should be. So the administration annually provides a recommendation, which is typically based in trying to keep that fund sustainable. So this year, as I indicated back earlier this, or I guess early last month, the administration's recommendation is to provide a PTR of 10.5%, which is equal to approximately $32.39 on the value of a $100,000 home. The recommendation was designed to make sure that we continue some level of property tax rebate to support a fund balance in the sales tax fund equivalent to roughly 85% of the maximum annual debt service in the fund and to start to structure some sort of policy around the rebate. Recognizing that, as I indicated, the fund balance, or the fund balance in that fund is really the sole firewall between the legal obligations in that fund and the county's general fund and the value of the assets on the riverfront that this fund serves. In the end, though, absent a defined policy, this ultimately comes down to risk tolerance on the level of fund balance that we retain in the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. As I reported out in the meeting where we previously discussed this, I've experienced when, in my early years here in the administration, a time when that fund essentially was reaching the point of insolvency. So the recommendation I'm providing, I've provided you is one designed to ensure that we don't hit that point again, that the fund remains solvent, viable well into the future, that it retains a balance capable of supporting policy flexibility into the future, recognizing many of the capital investments that we have coming on both stadiums in the, in subsequent years, and provides the board with the flexibility it needs to resolve those commitments. So, Madam President, happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to keep the presentation short since we did go through a rather substantive presentation on this roughly a month ago.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I'm sorry, just one, just one quick note. I referenced the by leave, I didn't reference the actual by leave in front of you. So you do have in front of you, the administration's recommended by leave, which is in front of you as Resolution Number 30. I do want to advise that there are two resolutions, because when we were putting this together, we weren't quite sure where the board would be. We wanted to provide flexibility. So there is a, there are two Resolution Number 30s, one relating to the administration's recommendation of 10.5% or 9.625. There's also a resolution in front of you that prescribes a full property tax rebate amount. So I just wanted to make sure that as we move forward, there's clarification on which Resolution Number 30 we would be adopting. So, sorry for that.
Madam President? Before we get started on that, before I get to our points, because I know we had a brief recess and I didn't get the chance to talk to the lawyer as well, but I don't know how we got two Resolutions Number 30 when the, I understand the rules and I thought how we operate, it goes to the clerk. And my Resolution Number 30 with the full 30% has been sitting on the calendar for some time. So I don't know how, by leave number one, could we could have two Number 30s? That's confusing to me, and I think it's, I'm a little, I hope it's not what I'm thinking. But by leave number 30, Resolution Number 30 that's been on the calendar out to the taxpayers' public record for this meeting has the resolution that I introduced at 30%. So I'm trying to understand how we came up with two 30s, that this one just arrived minutes before we came into the meeting to vote. So shouldn't this be a different number? Shouldn't it be two by leaves? My by leave was already on the calendar for some time.
Madam President, so I'm not sure how the board wants to take the numbering. The 10.5%, 9.625 million arrived as I requested this be placed on the agenda to provide the board with the flexibility to enact either the 30% or the administration's recommendation. So whether you want to renumber one is...
Yeah, well, we definitely want to vote on the 30. I hope we're not trying to tiptoe around this 30 that's been on the calendar for some time. I mean, I did what I was supposed to do. We put it on the calendar to the clerk, and then this came parading in and minutes before the meeting. So I'm just a little, I mean, I would hope we wouldn't do that. I would hope we would, if you're not for the 30, we would, I want to vote on it. Don't, let's, don't sneak around and put two 30s up here. I did what we were told to do, this was the number we had. It's been sitting on the calendar for everyone to see it. And I would hope that, you know, it's one thing if you vote it down, it's another thing if it looks like, you know, trying to, I don't know if it's, you know, making my office look like we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. I just wanted to make sure that, because they worked really hard and had the meetings and those kind of things, and I think this deserves to be vetted up or down. That's, that's, that's my understanding.
I was just going to note that our numbering system is such that we knew that the PTR resolution was going to be Resolution Number 30. The content of that resolution could be different depending on which version of it. So we didn't choose a new number when we drafted other versions of it. I've got seven or eight versions of this on my computer, or they're all Resolution Number 30.
I got you, but I'm saying, we put it on the clerk. I just did what we were supposed to do. It's on the thing, 30 has been taken. It's like the football team. Once one person has 30 on their jersey, we can't have two 30s on the thing. Somebody got to go get 31. But I want this to be voted on. I don't want to be going down on a technicality.
And it will be voted on. And so we often have options, even though it's a resolution, we have options of which way we want to go. To make it Resolution 31 would not make it the PTR. It would, I mean, 30 and 31. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Madam President, as Assistant Administrator Brugan indicated, the PTR resolution was slated as Number 30. Nothing here prevents any of these from being introduced and voted on.
So you look at both options and you either vote it up or down. Yeah.
Right. And there, at the end of the day, there will not be two Resolution Number 30s that pass.
No, I understand that, Madam President. I just said on this calendar, usually last year, we did a couple different by leave, one, two, three. On here, it's only one by leave, and the by leave that we asked to have was this 30%. So I would have thought it would have said a by leave number two would be this other by leave, but it didn't do that. And I just want to make sure, because I know my office did what they were told to do and follow the rules, that we don't come back and we got a technicality.
So it is still on the agenda with the 30%, Resolution Number 30, and then also Resolution 30 for the 10.5%. So yours is still on the agenda, it's just an additional one that deals with the PTR.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure, because there's only one by leave on here. So don't we need two by leaves?
It's the same, well, same subject, PTR, with different options.
The clerk's office got it late, and we would be adding it after the meeting. We would, and it would be by leave two.
Not my by leave, you got mine also.
Your by leave is by leave one, and it will stay as by leave one, but the other one will come in, it will be added after the meeting as by leave two.
Okay.
We got it too late to get it after, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Nope.
I mean, not for you, but just in general, it's a technicality. So that kind of explains some of it too. So did you have additional comments as it relates to Resolution Number 30?
Yes, so Resolution that I have on here is by leave one, calls for the full 30%. And I'll tell you why. I know every time the administration continues to recommend a very low number, and, you know, they have that right. However, each year, we have to vote on this. So there's no voting on a 10-year plan. Every year, you look at how much money you have and you decide if you can do it. And based on this year and what we have in the bank, we can do it. Now, what they're going to tell you is that, oh, well, we can't do it for 10, five more years. That's, we don't even know what's going to happen in five more years, but thank God, the law says you have to vote every single year. So we've got to look at this year, what we got in the bank and what we can afford. And it's hard for me, in a minute, we're going to have MSD come up and they're going to talk about a rate increase. We got to look at what's really happening out here. We just passed a levy, and that's an increase. Mental health is an increase. So you're going to, your next bill, your bill will go up. Now, on the taxpayer side, we can't keep saying, we got to keep going up on all your stuff, but then over here, we cannot give you a break. We can't do it. And then we come back and say the argument, and I agree with Mr. Malu on a lot of things, but on this one, we disagree. And I know the administration, you put numbers and you put the numbers based on the case you want to present. But the reality is, we got the money to do it. We will not go insolvent. I asked them, if we did 30% this year, would we be insolvent? He said, "No." They talking about, well, if you keep doing it five, 10 years, I don't know what's going to happen in five, 10 years. Inflation is up. That means when you buy bread, it costs more. That means from a tax, sales tax, we're getting more. And so my difference here is that I'm forgiving the people a break. Your tax bill will be due in January, the hardest month coming. The economy is shaky. Now, maybe next year, the economy go great and we can look at some other things. Now, I did what I was asked to do. Last year, I asked for a tax holiday just like Warren County. I was told, Reese, you got here too late. I was new, trying to understand it. But now I ain't late. I asked for a tax holiday, and the response is, "Well, we're going to examine it next year, where your tax bill is due in January." I just came from emergency dental, that's why my, it's hard for me to talk, but the lady that was there, assistant at the dentist, she even said, "Oh, my God, Commissioner Reese, I sure hope y'all do that 30%. Maybe that'll get people, you know, really not leaving Hamilton County, because it's just so expensive." This is at the dentist. You know I ain't going to argue with the dentist. This is at the dentist. This is something real. Now, the taxpayers were lied to. They went to the polls, voted for stadium, and at the end of that, we got more than stadiums. Every time you look up, we got garages going up, we got development on the banks and all that stuff. $8 million for Wi-Fi at Paul Brown Stadium, and the taxpayers are on the hook to pay it. Eight million. Whether you go in there or not, you on the hook for $8 million. And the excuse is, well, it's in their contract. We promised them. Now, the people got screwed by the county. We weren't here, but they got screwed by the county because the county didn't put the people in the contract. They were promised with false advertisement. False advertisement. Told that they, you vote for this, you'll get 30% rebate. And every time we come up, we got an excuse. Now, last year, we was able to get it going for the first time in years and years. But we got the money to do it. But instead, we'd rather hold the money, and then in a few minutes, you'll hear from MSD saying we got to go up on rates. And I'm, right now, the only person so far that came publicly, say, "I don't want the rate to go up at all." Then you'll hear from 3CDC will be down here, "We got to build a $500 million hotel. We got to do a convention district." 500 and 200, 700 million. And they'll tell you, oh, that's another pile of money. This money was not a restricted fund. When you voted on... When you voted on this, you voted on sales tax, which goes to the general fund. This was not a restricted fund. We chose to make it restrictive because we got this contract with the Bengals that's got us handcuffed, so we chose to make it restrictive. But this ain't restrictive. This is general fund money. And we're choosing not to give the taxpayers a break. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford the sports teams. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford the big hotels. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford to give the guy a Millennium Hotel and the Port Authority, get him $5 billion, and we getting nothing out of it. We over there with green space, just looking around. We can afford all these things, but we can't afford the homeowner? Now, we went up for mental health because we said we need more money for mental health. But my God, can't we get them a break on the backside? We got a children's health levy that we merged, $100 million sitting around. I asked, well, can't we do something? Well, we got to study that. Well, the treasurer wants to be paid in January. She don't have time for a study. You got to pay your taxes in January. So my whole point is, it's something that we look at every year. There's nothing that we can vote on that's going to bind us for the rest. And I think the people can understand it better if we really were, if we really didn't have the money. But we have the money. The money is there. And people are on a right-now program. Right now, they got to pay their mortgage. Right now, they got to pay their gas and electric. Right now, they got to pay their water bill. January, they want right now that you pay your taxes. So we got to look at, how do we help people right now? And so for me, the day that we had that conversation with the property tax rollback, it was just...I was like, it's the tales of two different counties. On one hand, we had them come and get these pretty pictures, and we need a convention district, and, oh, man, we got to do it, and we can do it? We gonna make it happen? And then we come back, and we say, oh, my God, the Port Authority got sued. They lost in court twice. The court didn't say we had to pay at all. We was...they didn't call our names. But we went into the general fund and gave them $5 million for their mistake? And we got none but green space? That's one group. And then we get on this side and say, well, looking at the projections, doesn't look like we're able to give 30% to the homeowner. It just won't be fiscally able to do it. We got to have...we can't have two rules. Big business, we can do it. Homeowner, we can't help you. So I know that I may not have the votes. I had them last time. I appreciate it. It was tough getting them last time. But COVID economic effects did not go away. Inflation and everything else is hitting the people. And I'm just at a point where I just want to give the people a break. But I can go a step further. Why is the promise to the people subjective? But you say, we can't do it because we got a Bengal Stadium coming. We got to give...we gonna have to give them half a billion dollars to a billion dollars. That was Mr. Ludo just said there. If we do that, we won't be able to do all these bells and whistles for the Bengals. If we do that, we won't be able to pay that $8 million so they can have Wi-Fi for a few games. If we do that, we won't be able to have our obligations to the Reds that unfortunately lost 100 games this year. Even the Reds downsized because they said, wait a minute, we can't afford it. We're going to downsize the players. They got a break. All I'm asking is that the homeowners get a break. And some of these other things, I mean, I want to try to work with them. But I think we send the wrong message. We say we're for affordable housing. That doesn't mean people who don't have a house, we trying to help people to keep the house they got. And if the taxes keep going up, it's going to become unaffordable. And half of these people that come to us that want us to invest in these big deals and go up on the taxes, I looked at their zip codes, they don't even live in Hamilton County. One of them told me, oh, I don't live in Hamilton County. I live in Warren County because the taxes are low. But by the way, I need you to build this, build that. I've got great ideas. Hamilton County, you got to do it. I said, wait a minute, hold it. Why do we got to do all this? And you moved to Warren County because you said the taxes were lower. So I'm trying to even this playing field to make Hamilton County affordable. President Dumas is right. The little guy, she's right. And senior citizens that have come forward, they can't hold on to their house. So that's why I think the 30%, we have the money. It's not fiscally irresponsible. Don't tell me about 25, 2025, and 2024 because the law does not allow us to vote on '24 or '25 or '26. It only allows us to set the rate for '23. And we have the money to do it without us going insolvent, without us being fiscally irresponsible. And I believe that when 2024 get here, then we'll have that conversation. But 2023, the property tax will be due in January, and people need help now. So I wanted to say that. I know next year, '23, we'll be talking about the Bengals, and what do we want the thing to look like? And we'll be talking about the bells and whistles, and do we want the concession stands? Do we want the screens? Do we want all those things? And they'll say, we got to do it because we have a contract. I'm asking us to keep the contract with the homeowners who were told they would get 30%. So that's why I asked for this by leave. I would like to have a vote on it to go up or down, but I think at least it needs to have that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, and then I'll make a...did you want to make a comment?
Just a point of clarification procedurally, if you'd like, Madam Commissioner, or Madam President. So any commissioner can bring forward a resolution to be voted upon. If that is...if that motion dies for lack of a second, then that resolution will not be voted on this day, this meeting. So a motion can be brought for a resolution, be specific which resolution. But if that motion dies for lack of a second, then a vote will not be taken on that item this day.
Can I add some point of clarification? If it doesn't get a second, it's on the...I want to have acknowledgement that it is on the calendar as by leave number one.
I believe the clerk has addressed that.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So if it doesn't, for lack of a second, where does it go? Do it stay on the calendar? We've had that before.
It'll be in the record.
It'll be in the record. That's what I want to make sure.
There won't be a vote on it, though.
It will stay in the record, and it will say, for lack of a second.
Thank you.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yeah, before I provide my comments, I want to ask a question of the Budget Director, John. Because I know there was a meeting this morning, and we're always getting updated information related to all things, including the PTR. So Mr. Brugan, you talked about some projections in the sales tax, you know, going into the future. And before I comment, I just want to have a better understanding of what the projections are related to sales tax. I know we're in an uncertain economy with inflation and other things, and so I just was hoping that you could provide that information for us.
Just broadly about where we think sales tax is going? I'm sorry.
Well, specifically related to this fund.
Specifically related to this fund. And really, the answer is, we don't know. We have projected a minus 5% in sales tax next year because, you know, we keep hearing talk about a recession, and we don't know what sales tax is going to look like in a recessionary environment. The last recession, we saw a year of minus 9%. So we're at minus 5 at this point, and the future will be what it is.
Right. And I knew you can provide a certain answer, but projections are important as we talk about the PTR. Thank you. So, yeah, and I just want to set this conversation and provide some clarity. We're talking about...we're not talking about not providing the PTR. We're talking about how much is going to be provided through the PTR. So we're talking about two different options. One is the administrator's recommendation of 10.5. The other option is the 30%. So I just want to be clear, doing nothing is not in front of us. That is not what's on the table. What's on the table is how much of a PTR we're going to be providing for the taxpayers. So to provide a little bit of context here, I always find myself providing context, but I feel like that's my role. Sometimes we used to have Todd Fortun playing this role, but I'm playing it today. I just want to roll back for a minute. You know, when I first got to the county, we were in difficult financial straits. We were cutting positions. We were doing none of the economic development stuff that we're doing now. We were reducing services. We were in a bit of a crisis mode. And so we had a lot of tough decisions to make. I was on the board at the time when we were making those tough decisions, and we are in a very different place right now in Hamilton County. We've got a stable budget, and we've got a budget that also represents opportunity for us to partner with the 49 jurisdictions in this county in a real way. And I think we...and we've all said it, we're very proud of the work that we're doing. And so at this moment in time, you know, we've got a stable budget. We're providing competitive wages for our employees. We are doing community redevelopment grants. We're doing the community impact grant, which we just talked about. We're responding to citizens' needs because we have the capacity to do it. The 513 relief program is part of that. We have a bond rating of double A3, which is very good and something else that we should be very proud of. And we have the ability to advance some of our capital projects through our general fund. This is something we could not have done six or seven years ago. So I just want to create a frame that talks about where we are as a county when we then start to talk about some of these restricted funds, the stadium fund being one of them. And so we're talking about the fund, the stadium fund, and what that fund is obligated to do, which really is at the crux of what we were talking about here. So this fund has to pay for the debt associated with the stadiums and the development on the riverfront. It has to pay for football stadium operations. It has to pay for baseball stadium operations, and it has to pay for the Cincinnati Public Schools pilot payment. Those are the straight-out obligations of this fund. And the total of all of that is around 80 to 85 million annually. So that's just right off the top. We have to do this stuff. The debt is about 50 million. So you peel out some of the operations dollars, and now we're down to $50 million that is related to the debt we owe on the stadiums and the development at the riverfront. We have been told by the administrator and by the Budget Director that experts in finance and in economics have been telling us that about an 85% of what we owe, so 85% of the 50, is about what you should have on hand as a reserve. It's like if you own a house. You've got money in reserve in case the furnace breaks, or you get a leak in the roof, or you need...you have an appliance breakdown. You have a reserve. This is the way you budget. This is the way you approach things. You don't spend down your reserve because if something were to happen, then you're really...you've got a problem. And related to the obligations of this fund, we have debt service that we have to pay. It has to be paid. And so if it cannot be paid through this fund because we've spent down the reserve, then we have to dip into the general fund. The general fund is what's funding all of these other things that I just talked about that we all are very proud of and rightfully proud of. So the challenge here is the balance, right? How much is enough to keep into the reserve, to have a reasonable rate of reserve? And then how much is left to do the PTR? And from my frame, that's where I sit. I am very worried about two things. One is having the reserve dip so low that our rating changes, and it's more expensive for the county to borrow money, which is not where I don't think any of us want us to be. And the other one is just dipping into the general fund to the point where we're not able to do some of the things, competitive wages, community redevelopment, that the general fund supports. So these are the things that I have contemplated in trying to figure out for my own benefit where I am on the PTR, because as Commissioner Reese says, we do this every year. We talk about the PTR every year, and we have to figure out where we are at this moment in time. But I want to say that I've asked Mr. Brugan for the runs, as I always do, and, you know, I'm very concerned about doing something at a rate of 30% because the reserve fund then dips well below this 85% that I just talked about. And I don't think that that is a good way to budget, and so I am not in favor of doing that. What I am in favor of is doing something that keeps that reserve at an amount that's around the 85% that's been recommended by the financial experts. So we don't know what the future holds, as Mr. Brugan just said. You know, we are facing potentially a recession here in the near future. We don't know. We'll have an opportunity next year to talk about this again. The 10.5 recommendation, I think, recognizes that we want to keep the reserve, but we also want to do something to pay into the PTR as we do every year. So from my vantage point, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. We have to look at projections. We have to look at the current economy. We have to make a decision about what is the risk of having a reserve that is lower than what's been recommended by the financial experts. And from my vantage point, we've worked really hard to not only related to the general fund, to all the things that we're so proud of that we're doing as a county, but we've worked really hard to maintain these restricted funds as well, whether it's the parking fund, the TOT, this fund. We've worked really hard to create these balances because we don't know what's coming, and we don't know what the future holds. And so I think the reasonable PTR is the 10.5, and I am planning to support that at today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I have yet to make any comments. Just a few comments. When I came in 2019, we were in a $29 million deficit. We, as was said earlier, we have a structurally balanced budget now. I don't want to go back to that. As I looked at the numbers that Jeff and John had given me, it concerned me. The 30% PTR efforts, I think, were honorable for the people, for the commission who did it at that time. But as Jeff said, there was really no way to know if we could afford this amount and maintain a reasonable reserve. As a commissioner, I have the responsibility to look at the financial landscape and forecast for any emergencies that may come forth to us. I do not want to go into the reserve if we don't have to. And as was said earlier, if you have the money, it doesn't mean you spend the money. We definitely want to do a PTR, and there will be a vote here today. And I think people know that we've done all that we can do to provide some relief to the people during this almost post-pandemic time. But I have to think about what's best for the county and what other areas do we want to be able to maintain, excuse me, some reserves to do all the great things that we're doing. And so because of that, it makes sense to me. We have to make a decision by December 1st and let the auditor know, and we will do that today. But it makes financial sense to me to give the PTR, but not at the 30% level. So at this time...
Madam President. Yeah, I don't want to rush through this. I know we trying to get to something else, but if you don't mind. I just wanted to highlight some things because it's almost like it was presented as though Commissioner Reese just pie out of the sky because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. I want to say that I had some economic people look at these numbers as well. This is not a pie out of the sky. In fact, at one point, the auditor even had said, why aren't we doing the 30% we committed? And that's the auditor, since we want to talk about what the auditor has to say. But I do think that our messaging is kind of double-sided. We're saying here that we want to do what's best. We want to keep our bond rating. And bond rating is affected also by borrowing capacity. And those who are in the economic world or the business world or small business world, the reality is, if we're saying what has been said today, then we wouldn't even be considering...we wouldn't even be considering talking about the new stadium. We wouldn't even be talking about a new stadium or fixing up any stadium because of our debt capacity if we're talking about just this fund. If we're talking about just this fund, we wouldn't even be thinking about talking about these larger things like a convention district if we're saying we're going to be conservative about our bond rating and the fund. We can't build our rating, A-plus rating, off the backs of the taxpayers while we walk around and give the big businesses all of these government-funded major things. So either we're having a convention district or we're not because we can't afford it. Either we're going to do a brand-new upgraded stadium or we're not because we can't afford it. Because that's what it seems we're saying today. We're saying... We're saying that we're in dire need. Now, I want to clarify something so we'd be very, people can understand. When you say restricted fund, restricted funds are usually done by the Ohio Revised Code. And our engineer is here, and he has restricted funds, and the Ohio Revised Code is the people that are restricted. This is not a restricted fund. I asked Mr. Ludo. This is really just general fund money. We just, before us, some people came and said, we're going to only use this money so that we can keep the commitments to the Bengals. The same folks that put naming rights that we can't even get a return phone call. We want to keep our commitment to them. We're not, we're not talking about bond rating when we go down there and do all these parking garages and do debt. We didn't say nothing about bond rating when you went out and bonded the Millennium Hotel down and it's still sitting there with nothing on it, making zero dollars. We didn't say anything about bond rating when the port authority was recommended by the administrator that we pay the port authority for something they messed up that was $5 million out of the general fund. No one got up and said, let's look at the table. Let's look at, can we fiscally afford to pay for something that the court said we didn't even have to pay for? No one said, they said, we gotta do it, so let's do it. So I just want to be clear. Fiscally, we can do this. Fiscally, the fund will, this fund that ain't even a restricted fund, but we self-restricted it, this fund would not be insolvent because we're going to go straight to borrowing again on stadiums that we ain't even paid for yet. All I'm saying is let's have, I think the people don't understand because the ones I'm running into, so they can't understand why their property taxes are going up. They can't understand it. My beautician says she can't understand. She told me. Why am I, why is my rate, why is my, I'm trying to hold on to my house in Forest Park. Why, why am I going up? Now, we went and went with mental health and the voters voted for it, but we put it on there. They're going to get a little uptick now. I'm trying to find a way to, on the back end, to reduce it. They're not going to understand that we got $100 million in levy money just sitting there ain't being used, which could be rebated back to the taxpayers. So I just want to make sure, however we vote, I just want the facts out there that I'm not no willy-nilly, just jump out the bed, we can do it, so let's do it. No, number one, you made a promise to the taxpayers. That's number one. And the question is, why do you keep your commitment to the Bengals but can't make your commitment to the taxpayers? Why do you keep your commitment to the Reds, but then when it comes to the taxpayers, you can't keep the commitment? So I'm trying to have one set of rules. And then number two, we got the money. The money is here and it will not hurt this fund if we went this year. And number three, we vote on it each year, each year, based on what the financial projections are. So wanted to highlight that. This is not a restricted fund by the Ohio Revised Code. We self-restricted. This money was not to be doing some other stuff that we've done with this money down at the riverfront. It was for the stadiums. We doing more than that. And number three, if we can keep our commitment to them, why can't we keep our commitment to the taxpayers? So those were the points, how I got to the 30% that we'd be allowed to do it, would not make us insolvent. I've seen nothing to say our credit rates are going to go down. MSD is going to come in a minute and say, you got to go up on the rates because our credit rating got to go down. Why does it have to be on the backs of the poor homeowners who are just trying to hold on? So with that, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Let me also clarify my comments. There is definitely a negative impact on this fund if we do 30% rollback. Definitely a negative impact because what we've been told is that 85% of what we need to keep in here is 40, about 43 million. And if we do a 30%, we dip down to 28 million next year. So we are down below the recommended amount. If we go at the 10.5, we're about 45 million, so we're just over the 43. So there is a clear impact here. And when we talk about the bond ratings, the bond ratings matter because the taxpayers are paying for the increased cost to borrow. The county's paying it, but the taxpayers are paying it because they pay taxes into the county. So there's definitely a negative impact. If our bond rating suffers because we have dipped below the reserve amount that's been recommended, you, we, there's a risk there, and that's a risk I'm not willing to take. So we just have different, I think we have different opinions about the impact of doing these, these different things. And I also want to just be clear because I think that maybe if people were listening, they hear the 10.5, they hear the 30, they, what does this really mean? What are we talking about here? So the difference between doing a 30% and the 10.5, which has been recommended by the administrator, is about $60 a year, so it's about five bucks a month. That's what we're talking about. That's the difference that we're talking about. So we, the 10.5 has us doing something, just not as much as the full PTR. And lastly, unfortunately, we are tied by a contract that was entered into many years ago, and we've talked multiple times about how everyone in this county dislikes the lease. We've talked about it multiple times. And we are tied to that lease until it's renegotiated. And I'm looking forward to the renegotiation myself to do a better job at preserving the taxpayer resources, but at this moment in time, we don't have that luxury. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the question. Vice President Reese, I'll provide the courtesy for you to present your resolution first, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. I like to, I would like to enter, by law, number one, Resolution Number 30. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that 30% of the proceeds, averaging $27,474,000 of the proceeds from the dedicated one-time 1% sales tax be used for property tax reductions for the homeowners for 2022 payable in the calendar year of 2023.
Is there a second? Hearing none. That, that motion dies. I'd like to make a motion from the, from the floor to adopt Resolution Number 30, authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year 2023. The administrator's recommendation now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that $9,625,000, which is 10.5% of the proceeds from the dedicated 1/2% sales tax, is to be used for property tax reductions from the 2022 tax year payable in calendar year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we will move forward for our 115 public hearing. A proposed 2023 to 2027 MSD Capital Improvement Program and the 2023 MSD Operating Budget.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started unless we're taking a break. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Diana Christie, the Director of MSD. Thank you to the commissioners for this public hearing and this opportunity to present MSD's requested 2023 operating budget and our 2023 capital budget, which is presented as a five-year capital improvement program. The requested budgets were prepared, initially drafts were prepared in August, and we provided updates that were shared with you along with these formal requests for the hearing in November, I believe on November 20th. They have been posted for the public on our website for the last several weeks. And before I get started, I wanted to introduce who I have with me here today. Ryan Wells, Chief Engineer, Deputy Director for MSD. Jenny Richmond, our Chief Operating Officer and Deputy Director for MSD. Also have Jack Rennencamp, Division Manager, and Joseph Schuster, who is our Senior Budget Analyst with us at MSD. A lot of other folks were involved in working on these budgets and putting the information together. And also, as you probably know, we have been working closely with the county administration, Holly Christman, some of the county team, Joe Graff in particular, and want to thank them for their time and assistance in putting all this together. Didn't want to advance, hold on.
It's not working.
It's not working. You can just advance it for me. It's not that, okay. Just quickly, just to introduce MSD to any of those listening. MSD is a clean water utility. What we do is we treat wastewater, over hundreds of millions of gallons of wastewater each day. We treat those through over 3,000 miles of sewer pipes throughout our entire Hamilton County region and parts of Butler County, Warren County, and Claremont County. We have nine treatment plants. We have 100 pump stations in order to do that work. We also have constructed over 44 acres of green infrastructure in connection with our consent decree. In addition, we have nine wet weather facilities, which are different from treatment plants just in that they do not run continuously. Oops, can you go back? Now it's working. There we go. So in putting our budget requests together that, that you have before you, we really, you know, we put these together and we put these requests together each year, and we're driven by the needs of the utility. But we're also driven by certain constraints, including those that are communicated us, communicated to us from the county teams. So we start a budget process early in the year, early in the, late in the spring, I think, early in the summer, with those folks that operate our plants and run the various divisions of MSD, looking at their needs for the coming year. But we, what we have, what we put together is not really a wish list, per se, because we also start with a target that's presented to us from the county administration. So that target tells us that we're not going to, you know, we don't have the ability to fund MSD at any higher level. So with that in mind, you know, we're going into this knowing we have all these needs, but we have constraints. And so we do everything we can before you even see this draft budget to only give you what we feel is needed to run the utility, to meet our permits, to pay our staff, and to, you know, provide the level of service that is expected from our customers. So the drivers, as I indicated, is that we have aging infrastructure and it requires a lot of investment. And you're going to hear today about facilities that are, you know, nearing 70 years old, sewers that are, you know, 200 years old in some cases. Regulatory compliance, and that's not just the consent decree. There are other regulatory drivers. We have new permit limits being introduced all of the time, and we have to upgrade and meet those terms. We're building, we're building new facilities, we're building new sewers, so we're expanding our services. We have to provide the funding to operate and maintain the assets that we have constructed. The O&amp;M costs, the operation and maintenance costs are trending higher due to labor costs, inflationary pressures. MSD isn't immune to any of that. And of course, the reactive maintenance that we tend to perform is more costly than proactive approaches. So those constraints, as I mentioned, you know, we know that affordability is an issue. We've heard a lot about that today. But we also know that we have a level of service that's expected by our ratepayers. We have uncertain regulatory requirements, market considerations, inflationary pressures. Those are the reality that we're all in today, and we are very mindful of that when we put this budget together. We also have a reduction in our internal resources, you know, over the last 10, 12 years. So if you look back a decade ago, MSD actually had more employees in certain divisions, engineering, for example, than we have today. This situation with these, you know, the constraints that we have and the lack of the investment in our assets, which are aging, is not unique to MSD of Greater Cincinnati. This is what's happening to our water and wastewater infrastructure nationwide. We've heard about the disasters, the more recent one in Jackson, Mississippi. Everyone's familiar with Flint, Michigan. Those crises aren't that far off from things that are a risk to MSD. You know, we have, we have aging pumps. Those pumps fail. Yes, it doesn't impact your water supply, so you may not hear about it, but it impacts the environment. We have discharges and overflows that we all know about. Those are even worse when we have pumping outages and, and equipment outages at our plants. So we are in a very similar situation and, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to over-scare people, but we really are that close, we are very close to a crisis of that scale in terms of some of the pumps and some of the equipment that we have failing because of the lack of investment. What I had here on this slide is just a, a letter that US EPA, a memo that US EPA put out earlier this year. And you can see, I mean, again, the country is just facing these unprecedented, unprecedented challenges with our aging water and wastewater infrastructure. Our consent decree is also not unique to MSD of Greater Cincinnati. These are just a sampling of some of the communities that have similar combined sewer overflow and sanitary sewer overflow consent decrees and that they have been managing and investing in updating their infrastructure to bring it into compliance with the Clean Water Act. Many utilities face these challenges, and yet we're also looking forward, knowing that there are new regulatory requirements on the horizon that will require us to invest even So our sewer system, we talk about the 3,000 miles of sewers. What does that look like? You know, this is a, you know, countywide system, 3,000 miles of sewers. Many of those have not been inspected, meaning we, we don't know the condition of them. So 60% of the system has been inspected. That means we've done some kind of camera, TV work. We have a risk, a risk-based analysis to know where our highest risk assets are. That'll be based on the age. It's based on the type of sewer it is, whether it's an old brick sewer or, you know, a more up-to-date sewer. And we can analyze and prioritize the needs to address the highest risks. But as you can see, you know, many of these sewers are an extreme and high-risk group. That means we need to do something before they fail. Now, 45% of the sewers being over 50 years old, again, some of them are 100 to 200 years old, and they are in operation. Those aren't just, you know, historic sewers that are underground, not, not in use. We're maintaining an outdated system. So overall here, you know, we can't go out all in, you know, any period of time. It's not, it's not anticipated or it's not requested that we can go out and update all of our sewers, line all of our sewers all at once. But we have to continue on the path that we're on to do these risk assessments, to repair the sewers as much as possible before we have more serious problems. So the assets that we're speaking of, if we, if we don't maintain them, they can provide, they can result in very serious consequences. These are just some examples of the larger failures that resulted in disruptions to the public and that made headlines. You know, this is certainly not what we want to have. We want to be able to address these problems before we have risks like this. Sinkhole open in downtown, that's one of the ones where it was a maybe 150-year-old sewer that was in operation, created a sinkhole, shut down portion of downtown for a period of time. The bus near the zoo was a few years ago, but is probably the largest sinkhole of this type that we've had. And the Friendship Park sewer failure, that was a really, really serious failure that was very costly to repair. So replacement costs versus rehabilitation of sewer is, you know, on average, industry benchmarks indicate that it's going to be three to five times higher to replace the sewer, not to mention those emergency situations that we want to avoid, but just the replacement of the sewer alone is a lot more expensive than rehabilitating it. So even though our sewers are old, we can actually continue to use them, and there's a lot of technology that exists to keep these older assets in place and into line them and, you know, really make them new again, essentially. So that is our goal, but as our system ages, we get into a situation where the more severe cracks and the more severe problems in these sewers make it so that we, we can't just line the sewer, we do have to replace it. And, and what happens when we have these failures in, in communities is that, again, not only are they expensive, but they're very disruptive. This is an example of a repair we had in Clifton Heights. $1.2 million for this sewer to be replaced. The sewer, this is a public sewer that runs under some homes in that neighborhood. And I know you've heard about those issues in the past. These are far too common in this area where we have homes that were built on top of public sewers, and this creates a lot of risk, and it creates a lot of expense for us when we do have to replace them. We have another example- We have another example here in Delhi Township. This was a, you know, half a million dollar repair project where we had a pipe burst next to a foundation of a home. So that repair project was very costly, of course, very disruptive, and not to mention, I'm sure, pretty alarming for the residents that lived there. And another one, this was not this, this current year, this was, I think, two years ago, we had a major sewer collapse on Dana Avenue. This was another very large sewer, resulted in a large cave-in, and we had to shut down the street and perform this work at the most inconvenient time for those college students. So as you can see from the photos there, pretty, pretty serious work in a very large sewer at a very busy intersection. So I share this because this is really, you know, what we're facing for both putting together a capital budget request and an operating budget request. All of this is what, you know, we are managing every day, and we are trying to do the best we can with the funds we have. But if you look at industry benchmarks and you look at the assets that MSD has and how large we are, you can see there on the left, this is, you know, an industry benchmark that your investment in terms of the PDC is your planning, design, construction. So actual capital investment should be based on the assets that we have, at least $150 million a year. So this is outside of those consent decree projects, those, you know, expanding our service area and all of those projects. This is just to maintain the assets we have. This is, I should also point out, based on an analysis that we did, not quite 10 years ago now, but it certainly would be a higher number if we were to reevaluate the replacement cost of all the assets that MSD has. So that cost there of, I think it's 13 billion, would probably be much higher today and is, to our knowledge, a conservative estimate. So what, if you look at our CIP, our average annual CIP has been 130 million. That includes about $30 million worth of allowances that do not go towards the capital projects. So our annual investment at $100 million is about 50% less than industry standard. So all of this, again, is to just say that, you know, we really need to continue what we've been doing. We should be investing even more. We understand the constraints, but we can't, you know, we can't ignore the assets we have that this community relies on for the work MSD does every day. So with that, and the detailed CIP budget request was provided to you, here I just have the overview. So this is the capital improvement budget request. Again, we have a five-year program, but the board will be approving funds for the 2023 capital projects only. The overall 2023 request is 140 million, 140.5 million. You can see the breakdown there for projects. We have 31 projects in planning and design, so early stages, planning, and then, you know, moving into the design. The construction phase projects were, we have for 2023, eight projects in that phase. I, as you can see, I starred that, just as a reminder, I always want to point out that that construction funding is not approved annually with this budget. Those construction projects are not funded until we come back. We present the final design before we go out to bid, and the board approves the project and the funding for it at that time. But the planning and design, and then the construction allowances, are the approved funding as part of the 2023 budget. So again, all three of those costs make up the 140.5 million. And then you can see to the right, the five-year CIP, which is presented in the booklet that you have. I wanted to touch on, since I'm talking a lot about, you know, our asset management, you know, what our goals are and what our program is. You know, a lot of this is really all about having a realistic, long-term planning horizon. Unfortunately, in the last several years, really since we completed our Phase 1 of our consent decree, we have been replanning our capital plan every year. So the out-years tend to shift a lot, our priorities have shifted a lot because of that uncertainty in terms of where we're going with the larger capital program. So development of a long-term planning horizon and a realistic five-year CIP, that is, when we, when we put together that five-year plan, it essentially stays the same, is, you know, a big goal of ours, and I know the county team shares that with us. We do recognize that as we're moving into Phase 2A, once we have a schedule of projects and a plan for that, we would need to ramp up, doing more than what we're doing today would take more, more staffing and more support from our engineering staff. We also are really focused on the planning side, performing new, updated facility plans. Again, I talked briefly at the beginning, and I'll have some points at the end about our facilities themselves, the equipment. At our plants, we need capital investment, we do perform that, but, you know, having an overarching plan for each facility, each of our nine facilities, so that we, you know, are able to maintain our assets until we have a capital replacement project is essential. And that's in addition to watershed plans, that is, you know, more of what we've been doing, the consent decree. I'm really focusing on those, on getting those plans in place so we know where we're going. Risk-based prioritization of asset needs is ongoing, and then condition assessment, again, so that we know that we're hitting those highest-risk assets with the limited dollars that we have. So I'm gonna move into our 2023 operating budget request. I do need to point out that the budget book that we presented and the legislation we presented had an error in it, in the amount of debt service that is due in 2023, and this is something that the county's financial advisors and our financial team talked through yesterday. So it does impact the overall total operating budget and that bottom-line debt payment. Unfortunately, we were incorrect that we were lower going into 2023, and our debt payment is really staying the same. There was a refinancing that the county had performed, and our information was just off as far as what that payment was next year. Overall, though, what I wanted to focus on was the breakdown for the 2023 operating budget request. We present this in your book, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. So I put a snapshot from your book on the right, that's the incorrect number, the 79. The correct number is 84 million, and we literally discovered that last night and 8:00 this morning confirmed it. So we did not have time to update it, but it will be updated. So the two numbers that are incorrect, that I circled in red, the 79 million, and then the grand total. On the slide, I have the correct numbers, and I apologize for the confusion there. So the, the operating budget request, we break it out into these categories, and we focus on the personnel by division. Our overall personnel request is 65.5 million, that's our seven-divisional, division personnel. The non-personnel is 68.8 million, that is for the non-personnel by division. We also have additional non-personnel costs that are in this other category, that's our general fund overhead, our fleet, and our OTA, which is Office Technology Equipment Allowance, and then our SBU program. So those are the categories of our budget request. And what we've discussed generally, and we've provided for comparison purposes, are the three categories of the personnel, the non-personnel, and then that other non-personnel that I just mentioned, so the total without the debt service and without the SBU. This is what, in conversations with the county team, we have been focused on, and our request in terms of the O and M budget is 139.9 million. I'm highlighting here, again, that the budget that you have in front of you, the budget request that MSD put together, is one where we have already made every effort in those categories of the budget to, to meet the county's target. The county administration presented a target of 138.1 million. Had we not had that, again, you know, our needs are greater, our, what we could do, what we should do in terms of industry standards, really are greater than what we're presenting here in this budget, but we have been, again, doing everything we can to recognize the constraints that we're under. But based on the services we provided and the inflationary impacts that MSD is under over the last couple of years in particular, we've seen rising costs in nearly all aspects of our operations, including our chemicals, utilities, equipment, parts, disposal services, et cetera. And the one, the largest drivers of that are our chemical costs. Our chemical costs alone are over a million dollars greater than they were a year ago. Natural gas increases, just under a million dollars. That plus our disposal costs for our solids disposal has, you know, all three of those categories, the main driver for an increase in our non-personnel budget. In our personnel budget, the main drivers for any increase is that the negotiated salary increases, and I know the county's heard the same thing, I mean, we have a really hard time keeping employees, having employees at MSD to run our plants, to work in all of our facilities. You know, we have labor shortages industry-wide in the wastewater industry. So having negotiated salary increases helps that, along with other things, you know, trying to attract and retain staff is of vital importance to us and a huge focus. But certainly, we have to fund our budget for our existing personnel, and given that going into 2023, all of the represented employees will have a 4% salary increase. Our personnel budget has an increase, and the overall increase is actually about 3%. So again, we've been being very strategic in terms of any place that we can be more efficient and keep that overall increase minimal. We did include a small increase in our wastewater treatment personnel. We believe we need additional maintenance staff and operating positions, so that is noted in the budget book as well. Did I not, was I not on that slide? My apologies. So I, just kind of continuing on, you know, the pricing volatility for MSD in the areas of our operations and treatment, these are areas that are outside of our control. We, you know, continue to see the impacts of COVID in terms of the, in terms of the supply chain impacting costs, costs just being unpredictable, makes budgeting difficult, but these aren't things that we can go without. Some of them, we need to have the funds at the beginning of the year. We have utility bills that come due through the year, and all of those costs, again, we know they're expected to continue rising. The chemicals in particular is a real challenge for us, and I'm just using an example here of, you know, something that we rely on daily for disinfection is sodium hypochlorite. You know, we're purchasing two to three tanker trucks of that in a week during the peak season, and, you know, we just received notice, I believe this came through yesterday, about additional potential supply chain disruptions that will impact chemicals needed for the wastewater industry, and advice on how to manage this. And the advice that the EPA is giving to utilities like MSD is to, you know, consider contacting alternate suppliers, having multiple contracts out, you know, the things we need to do so that we have those chemicals, because we can't go without them, means we have to have a budget so that we have the funds to enter into contracts and purchase orders. And then some of them don't come through. So that pricing volatility is a real challenge for us, we have folks working on it a great deal, but we don't have any better predictions for 2023 at this time. So I just wanted to quickly go through, you know, the treatment facility needs, just put some more context to it. So at our Mill Creek facility, which this is a picture of, and would be remiss not to mention that, you know, we do do tours at our treatment facilities, and they really are a helpful opportunity to come and understand the operations that we have and the size of the operations that we have. Our Mill Creek facility is the largest facility, we treat more than half the flow of the entire district at this plant, and these are just some of the figures of the annual needs of these things like the chemicals I'm speaking of, and then the disposal costs of our solids that we incinerate, plus the solids that are just landfilled. So, you know, hundreds of gallons annually, and these are, again, not discretionary, and this is the Mill Creek facility alone. So just some other areas of our facility to point out, you know, while these treatment plants are aging, we have actually, you know, maintained them and optimized them in a way that were extremely effective. We have folks that, you know, are keeping these pumps running and managing our system 24/7. Ultimately, at our nine wastewater treatment plants, our goal is to meet our permit compliance, and we've been recognized for that. We're recognized annually by NACWA, which is a national agency for our compliance with our permits, and we receive everything from silver awards to gold and platinum for our plant performance and compliance with our permits. And that is due to the hard work of the employees that work at these facilities 24/7. So also, just to point out, you know, the size of the pumps, when I'm talking about pumps at our, at our facilities, these are very large pumps. We have multiple, you know, raw sewage pumps, these are, these, you know, they take a beating. It's a pretty difficult system to maintain, but they also use a lot of power. And power is another cost that we don't have any control over, and I think everyone here knows that your power bill has gone up, like everything else. Well, MSD's power bill has gone up, and we have to pay it because we have to run these pumps, and we have to run our plants, and we have to continue to treat wastewater. So some things we've done, I mean, we've always done, is that we actually, we purchase power in connection with Greater Cincinnati Waterworks, so we have power purchase agreements, and we hedge that on the market, and we're buying power in advance. We're really out there getting, you know, the best rates that we can for electricity. We also are able to utilize reduction because of the city's solar array. So those are benefits we're seeing, so to be honest, our power as a utility probably hasn't gone up as much as, you know, some individuals have, but it is going up, and it has gone up, and that is reflected in the budget request. So we also, as I mentioned, when I say we're 24/7, you know, what are we doing 24/7? Well, we're, you know, we have a call center 24/7 for our emergencies and sewer backups. We also have operators that are at our plants, and our operators are monitoring our equipment, they're making sure everything is operating effectively, that we don't have outages, we're adding chemicals. So you can see here, you know, some of the operators and what they're using in terms of technology. These are positions, again, just getting back to the labor issues, these are positions that are very technical, it's really hard to hire people that have the training and the knowledge to perform these jobs, so you have to bring them in, to spend a lot of time training them, and then we have to retain them. So in order to, you know, pay them, you know, a good enough wage to keep these employees from leaving, and then leaving us with, starting over again with new staff, is a real challenge for us and a real challenge in our industry. You see there, the picture on the bottom left, I included that, but it's to say that it's not our 24/7 call center, but that it is a phone that we have in one of our plants, just to give you an idea of the age. And then, so the last visual I wanted to share is one that I think everybody really should see at some time in their life, that they never have been to a wastewater treatment plant and see the operation, and this is the beginning of an operation where we're screening out solids before it goes into treatment. And just like to put in a public service announcement for everyone that flushable wipes are not flushable. They come out in the system here, or they clog your pipes before they get here, or they clog our entire system, and we have a major, you know, major disruption and closure. So there's other things that get into the sewer system, a lot of trash. The folks that work here actually, to be honest, have a little collection system of trinkets and odd things they found in the sewer. So again, just an example there, and, you know, the overall point is that, you know, we do this job, and the folks that work on our plants do this job, so you don't have to think about it. But what we do is we collect hundreds of millions of gallons of wastewater every day, and we're doing everything we can to keep this equipment operating and running so that we're protecting public health and the environment. And then lastly, I just wanted to note, because the other category of our operating budget request is the sewer backup program. We've spent a lot of time at other points in the year talking about this, and certainly is a very important subject, but I did just, you know, include it here briefly to show our, you know, we've shared this table before, this goes all the way back to 2004 when the program was first put in place under the consent decree. We update this monthly on our website, so you can go in and you can see, not only can you see how many sewer backup calls we have, which is that top line, you can see which ones have been determined eligible for our program, and where the dollars are spent on that program. Year-to-date, at the end of October, I believe this is, we have spent $7.8 million on the sewer backup program. So the sewer backup program- So the sewer backup program request for 2023 is relatively the same with just a small increase, a small inflationary increase to manage the program as it is outlined in the consent decree. We have discussed additional initiatives. These are not all funded out of this account, the capital program in particular. And yes.
Thank you. Can I ask a point of clarification? Okay, you have on here totals spent to date. I gotta put my glasses on.
I know, it's very small.
Oh, you had, you said $7 million?
Year-to-date for 2022, so $7.8 million just this year.
Okay.
The number above it
Yeah.
is, is a running total since 2004, so it's 150 million.
Okay, 7 million out of how much? Do you have a cap on this or?
The 2022 SBU budget is about 11 million. And I have that somewhere. So we, perhaps we will be
Yeah, what I want to see is, I see all the red and that's what you spent. But I want to know how much, did you have anything left over? You're 7 million out of what?
Yeah, so I have
And out of what?
So I have the 7 million, so the 2022 SBU budget that was appropriated by the board was 11.2 million. So if, you know, we have two months left, we don't know what will happen. This is a very, you know, contingent fund in terms of, you know, the
Well, you say two months. I mean, we're in December.
But yeah, this total is just October, so we only have November and December.
Okay, now, what I need to know, the year before, did you spend all the money that we allotted? And what happened? Did it go, did it roll over?
So the year before, we did not. We had 8.2 million and I believe we were budgeted just over 10. So any funds that are budgeted that are not appropriated, I'm sorry, that are not encumbered or spent, those funds all are returned to the source. Yeah, it all goes back to the source. So any, as with any portion of MSD's approved budget, if we don't spend that money, it is returned to the source, meaning our overall, our MSD fund.
Yeah, I got you. I just wanted to see how
Yeah.
How on target are we in terms of the spend? That's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Weather-driven, got it. Okay, I got you. I just wanted to know how close we were.
It really depends on the weather for that year. We have more, more stuff.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and the only other comment I wanted to make, really, as I put this up here is just to say that, you know, we've talked about this a lot in a lot of detail when we've presented on the sewer backup program. And, you know, we are getting a lot of calls and we investigate every call. We respond immediately or within, you know, hours of receiving sewer backup calls. But we are still seeing that many, in fact, the majority of the calls we get are not eligible for the sewer backup program. So we are, you know, we've talked about that and I know there's, you know, we could talk at great length about it. But most of the reports are, we determine our matters caused by private property issues, meaning they may have had a blockage in their lateral or some other, you know, drainage problem that's contributing to the backup or it's overland flooding and there is not a capacity issue in the public sewer or any other blockage in the public sewer. And therefore, you know, while we're investigating those, we're not providing cleaning services and they're not eligible for the remainder of the program. So those numbers continue to really show that same issue. And with that, that brings me to conclusion. And again, I presented the budget books with the legislation. I didn't want to spend too much time today going through all the numbers because it's a lot of detail. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Talk about SBU again. I see the numbers continue to go down. I'm really concerned about the lack of qualification for residents. I know there's a criteria, but if you look at it in 19, it was 422 cleanups. And now, October of this year, it's 131. So are you guys actively looking at why those numbers are going, going down? And I heard about weather and all that, but I'm just wondering if it's more about maybe marketing so more people know about it or something.
Commissioner, yeah, that's actually a good point. It is one of the things we've seen. I wouldn't say that there's been much difference, you know, in the last year or two. But people know about the sewer backup program. We've talked about it a lot, which is a good thing because we definitely want them to call us. If they don't know, you know, call us and we'll come investigate it. But what we're seeing in our region is continued problems with stormwater that we are unable to address or continued problems with private property and flooding on private property. So we are certainly not going out there with a mindset that we don't want to help. In fact, the people in this program really, you know, they have a customer service mindset. They want to help, you know, the folks' homes that go in. But we are unable to because we cannot spend our public dollars if it's not eligible for the program. Really, this budget was, you know, we increased it a few years ago after we had some really extreme storms. So we had an extreme storm in 2016 that just, you know, was unlike anything we had ever seen. And then a couple of years later, we had another one, not quite as bad, but still haven't seen anything since, you know, that's that extreme. And so we've increased the budget so that we don't have, you know, a situation where we have to come back or there's any, you know, issues. But in reality, you know, it really is weather-dependent and we haven't needed the full amount. But it's, you know, it's possible and we still have two months left. No, we still have one month left. But I don't know the numbers from November. And we do have a lot, a lot of this is contracted work. So when we're doing our prevention program, we're doing construction and installation of prevention devices and pumps in people's homes. And so that's a great deal of work. Those take quite some time. So some of those projects could be lagging for whatever reason. We may even see a fair amount still in these last couple of months.
Okay, and lastly, my comment, I know you, MSD had asked for more money and the board has reduced your request a little bit along with staff. And so just using your crystal ball, what we have said we may allocate is adequate for you to do what you need to do. Is it adequate?
Currently, for this current year?
No, as we look forward to the 2023, you think what you're talking about as it relates to the budget, we did reduce it, not yet formally. But, and well, I think even last year, we reduced it.
Yes.
Is it adequate for you to do what you need to do? I mean, of course, you'd like to have more money, but with the amount of money that we approved last year and what we may be thinking about this year, is adequate to do the job right now?
The funds that we have requested for 2023 are really based on the level of service we're providing currently, meaning we're not really proposing, you know, new initiatives or new staff to any great deal. And adequate is, is perhaps a way to describe it. Do I think it's enough? Not necessarily. I think that, you know, we were running, we have shortfalls in a lot of areas. Again, the prioritization of the sewers requires us to go out and inspect them all. It requires us to, you know, then be able to use that data to figure out where the highest risks are to get ahead of it. That's just one example. There's a lot of things we could be doing with technology. There's a lot of staff if we had it. If we had more staff in our treatment plants, I think we really could, you know, be performing better and not have the outages that we've had this year. So it, we're keeping, we're keeping the lights on and we're running the plants and we're patching things together. And we have, we have a lot of folks that are good at that, but
And I'm glad that you were able to, or you'd like to incorporate raises, which is a good thing. So Holly, would you, do you have any, Holly works, is a staff person who works with you. Did you have any comments you'd like to make? And then I'll open it up for you guys. She may add some addition. Oh, I know. I was gonna wait till people spoke. Thank you, though, for reminding me.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner. As, I want to reiterate what Director Christie said, that we have worked closely with MSD on this budget. I will say just a couple of comments to her point. We did, back in May, give them an initial budget target of 138 for the operating and maintenance budget. I will say we had some time since then and we've communicated that with MSD. Based on some actual expenses, we would recommend that budget be taken down, which they did a little bit in their recent submittal. So I do commend them for that. I do think from, from staff's perspective and from our team, we do understand the constraints that MSD has in continuing to operate the sewer system. And in terms of keeping it updated and keeping it operating, as Director Christie said, we all want to make sure this trio goes away and goes away safely and up to all the environmental standards. So with that, we have communicated this with MSD. We understand the potential for a rate increase is needed. Given the demands of the system, it's not a great time to ask for that. We know or recommend that. But we would also recommend potentially working with MSD to see if we can take their budget request down a little bit. So that's my feedback. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kind of added, she didn't speak to that. You spoke to it.
Yeah. Sorry. Is that okay?
Well, no. That's incorporated in our budget. Is that incorporated in your budget? Of the rate increase? Okay, so I was surprised.
So every year MSD presents the, you know, the needed funds for the operating budget and the capital budget. And those are, you know, standalone requests. That's based on, you know, again, what we need. We have in the past, you know, presented information for a rate increase and which we have done this year as well. The rate study that we perform with our financial advisors, you know, really looks at a lot of different variables and financial policies that are set by the board. So that information, we have been working on that. We have presented a financial analysis, but in terms of rates, that's not part of what we've brought to the board today.
I'm just getting clarity.
Okay.
That's what I thought also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would like to, Marilyn, would you like to come up? Thank you for waiting so patiently. Marilyn Wall.
Thank you. My name's Marilyn Wall and I'm speaking on behalf of Sierra Club. Try to take this off. Certainly appreciate your holding the public hearings and I know the budgets are work in progress all the time, I guess through, through next week at least. But it would be really helpful to get more information sooner in terms of these documents that take a lot of time to review and understand. We've certainly learned some new things today. So I'm a little confused how we have a $5 million shortfall in the budget, operating budget document, but we don't know if we need a rate increase. I mean, it's just really hard to assess something, some of this stuff. And I know a lot of, a lot of the problem is we don't have an approved Phase II program to deal with the operating cost and to figure out how we're effectively planning for the future. The, I would certainly like to encourage the county and the city to get the new, to get the new, or at least the draft of the new Phase II, whatever it is going to be completed and deal with the issues that continue to, I think, delay all the progress that we need to make and are more costly when we have to have these long delays in getting projects done. Some of this is, could be helped a lot by, we used to get monthly reports from MSD, the enterprise management reports that we haven't been getting for two years. So it's harder to tell whether or not we're making progress on different projects and what's being delayed or why. It really interferes with transparency and being able to understand and comment on the budget. I mean, some of the things that we were concerned about coming into this hearing were about the wastewater collection and whether we were keeping in track with the intent a couple of years ago, which was to get all of these sewer lines assessed, which we're still, it sounds like we still have a lot that has to be done. And are we really on track? And is this budget going to get us on track? When MSD is talking about 15% of their sewer lines being an extreme risk of failure and so on, it's just very concerning that this can actually end up costing us a lot more in the long run if we're not on top of this. So, you know, as much as nobody wants rate increases, we know that. But we don't want them either, but sometimes we need to get some of these things done and get a handle on them. There's, we think a great need to do more stormwater removal and we don't see this in this CIP. We don't see that kind of effort in the past CIPs recently that would help in the long term have MSD treating less stormwater and less having to build huge systems like the HRTs that are very costly. And really have MSD treating a lot more stormwater than they do sanitary sewage, which is a little backwards. We'd really like to see more progress in terms of getting things done with the stormwater utilities themselves and being in cooperation with MSD. And I'm sorry, I'm over time, but, so I'll stop. But I appreciate you for holding these hearings.
Thank you for your comments. And Marilyn, the monthly reports, we talked about monthly reports a couple of months ago. Who was sending you those monthly reports? Was it you or your agency?
MSD was producing, they called them enterprise reports and they made them monthly and put them on the website.
Okay.
And that had a level of detail about spending and about problems and progress. And it just helps a lot more to understand what MSD needs and be able to, for us to answer questions like why is something progressing or not progressing and understanding, you know, the community's desire to see things improve.
So are those still happening, Diana? So you, I can't hear you.
We are still preparing monthly reports on our capital program and those are shared with the county team, the county administration. We are not putting them on our website, to my knowledge. Our website's been kind of undergoing some changes. But those are certainly records that could be provided to Ms. Wall and, you know, as we did before. But they aren't of the same nature that the EMAR, which she referred to, which was a monthly report that was done a few years ago. We did away with that and we discussed that a lot with the county team. It's a very, is a very tedious, not tedious, that's not the right word, but it really had a lot of input from various individuals and tended to create a lot of sometimes errors or different information because it wasn't connected to our, our system of record in terms of the capital project funds and schedules. So as we've built a new program management system, we've automated, you know, kind of the monthly reporting so that it's always all tied to the, to the real data. And we're actually working on building new dashboards that, you know, you wouldn't even need to wait for a monthly report. You could just kind of see this on a dashboard at any given time and providing access to that.
So what can Ms. Wall do now to gain some more information that she's
We can certainly provide her with the monthly reports. And I'm not sure when we, if that request was made, hopefully, if she had requested it, we would have provided it. But we can certainly do that. And perhaps it's that the content of the report isn't meeting what she's looking for. And so maybe it's, you know, a discussion we should have to see what else we could provide.
The county's been, the county has given us the variance report and the summary progress report, but it doesn't have anywhere near the level of detail. You know, the total number of projects in construction doesn't tell us which projects are in construction. You know, it's just, there's just a major gap between what we used to get and what we get now. So that's what we're seeking.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Diana. Okay.
No, I didn't know if I should stay.
I don't know. Vice, I don't know, but this, Vice President Reese, did you have any questions or comments for Diana?
I did have some questions. Thank you. I guess one of my questions, you talked about just now, you said some of the information is not accurate. We've got some decimal points in the wrong direction on this that you presented to us. My question is, do you have a CFO? Because it's kind of hard to give money because you got decimals that's on the, on there. And we just heard if you put it on your website, it might be incorrect. You know, we're kind of dealing with the taxpayer money. Do you guys have a CFO to look at these numbers? Make sure we're getting accurate information?
I just want to clarify, we had one error. It wasn't a decimal point. It was information about the debt service payment, which was refinanced by the county team. Many folks looked at that. There are a lot of financial advisors employed by both the county and MSD. And that information was corrected and
Well, I just want to say, in this, let me, let me be clear with you. Once you put this on, it's on YouTube. And everybody saw that you had misinformation. And then the misinformation, we had to ask about it. And then you said, well, here's the number and we didn't get to see it. Now, let's move further. We have a taxpaying citizen that came up and said, I want to have a report. And you said, well, we not putting it on the website because you get misinformation and
No, I'm sorry.
And, and outside of that, I'm asking, because we talk about a lot of money, I'm just asking, do you have a CFO to look at these numbers? That's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So let me start with, I, if I misspoke, that we don't have anything incorrect on our website. I was suggesting that we've been updating our website in terms of what we provide to the public so that it's, you know, a place where the public can come view public information and it's easy to find. There's nothing incorrect or there's no problems with the website today. What I was, what she What I was, what she was referring to was a report, I believe it's been over two years since that report was performed.
Do you have a CFO or not?
Does the board want to fund a CFO for MSD?
I don't know.
We have.
I don't know what you got over there.
So I have a senior budget analyst, Joseph Schuster, who stepped into the role a year ago in terms of, you know, budgeting. So he manages the budget. We have a finance division both at MSD and at the city that, you know, helps us. And we have a nationally recognized, internationally recognized financial consultant that works for us. So the number of people looking at.
So your answer is no. You don't have a CFO.
I don't have anyone with the title CFO.
Yeah, you don't have one. That's, I mean, let's, I just asked you a simple question.
I don't have anyone with the title CFO, but I.
Even though you have recommended to us some changes in your organizational chart, you do not have a CFO. That's I was asking, do you have a CFO? Was yes or no? And you said?
I don't have anyone with that title, but I believe that that role is being served.
Since when? I mean, how many, how long has it been?
We had a deputy director that worked on our budget and also managed three divisions. So his title was Chief Financial Officer, but the portion of the financial, the financial role he played in overseeing the budget, which was not all of his work, is being performed by other staff.
So how long has it been that you have not had a CFO by that title for your?
I believe he left MSD in around 2019.
Okay, I'd like to, can I continue? Thank you. No, I just, okay. The other question that I had, we had talked about rates, the reason why I had a meeting, and the meeting said that we would possibly have to do some type of rate increase, but you're saying no rate increase, or maybe Holly can help me understand this because that's my concern. My concern is rates, no CFO, and I'm just trying to get a understanding on this. So you're saying in this budget, you don't need any rate increase. I want the administrator to, to know that because they had a meeting with me and they were talking to me about rate increases, which I'm not a fan of.
So let me clarify, we did not speak to rate increases today. We presented the budget that we need for the operating and the capital for 2023. The financial analysis that MSD performs using its financial advisor every year, a draft of that has been delivered to the county team back in October, and we've had discussions about it. Ultimately, whether a rate increase and what level of a rate increase is needed is, of course, the board's decision. But in order to evaluate the need for a rate increase next year, really, there's a lot of variables at stake, and there's a lot of different decisions that have to be made. And those, those are really the board's decisions to make. So if I can use last year as an example, we presented a financial, so we have a rate model, and, and the rate model will give you a different rate depending on what you use for key financial indicators. So last year, for example, we understood the key financial indicator for debt service coverage to be a certain amount. The model then tells you, because it's a tool, that MSD needs a rate increase in order to keep that above the stated financial indicator, and that was determined not to be, I mean, the decision was that there wouldn't be a rate increase. So, you know, where those lines are in order to determine whether a rate increase is needed and at what level is really the information we need from the county. Other variables that really change the picture have to do with the debt that, I'm sorry, the, the funding that is available in terms of public financing and whether or not the board wants to take on any new debt by issuing bonds or to take advantage of, to the maximum extent possible, all of the federal financing options that are out there through the infrastructure funding that we have through the state revolving loan program. The level of that financing changes the rate scenario drastically. The CIP is another very large variable. So our CIP currently, for the out years, has projects that are, you know, not finalized. It's part of the Phase Two A, which has not been finalized. We don't have information in terms of how close the four out years of the CIP are to what will ultimately be approved, and that would change the rate analysis dramatically. So at this time, all we can do is present our financial model, which you have, present different scenarios. We've presented three different scenarios, and we've, we're still discussing that. But ultimately, the only thing MSD really is presenting to the board is the needs of the utility through the operating and capital budget and the, the financial indicators and where those, I think we talked previously, you talked previously before we got to MSD about risk tolerance, that, you know, that, all of those things are decisions to be made by the board, and then we can give you the, you know, the output of a rate model, which is, you know, really not a policy decision, it's just a mathematical effort.
Thank you. Holly, can you come up and interpret what Jessica said so that people watching can understand it?
Sure, thank you. I think the bottom line for administration is the data that we've seen, we did get revised numbers late last night, is that based on the budget MSD has submitted and any slight reductions to it would require a rate increase.
Thank you. I don't want to dance around it.
So we can work with them.
Yeah, this is the budget process. What was presented here, the only way we get to it, we would have to consider a rate increase based on what was presented today. Am I correct?
That's what our, that's based on what we've seen, yes.
Thank you. I like to make it plain so people watching at home who are paying for all this stuff know what we're talking about.
And if it's okay, Vice, Vice Commissioner, I'd like to defer to Administrator Aluda if there's anything else I missed in terms of his experience.
No, I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. I know we've seen the information that MSD has presented at that budget level, nor like as Director Christie said, in order to meet the, the thresholds of debt service coverage in order to keep the surplus account at the required amounts, the data we've seen would, would necessitate an increase in order to do that. I think if we can work with MSD to, on options that would prevent that or minimize it, we're happy to do that. I'm also cognizant of, I know one of your concerns, Commissioner, is just the transparency on this, and that if we are in a position of recommending to the board that we're, that we're recommending a rate increase and to the degree the board considers that, I would be concerned about perhaps needing another public hearing or so in order to make sure that that is, that, that people had the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Yes, that's, thank you. That was my issue in our meeting was that we need to have, we're going to start going down, is we got to have time. We can't throw it on a Thursday when we got a million other things, and we need to talk plain to people. We can't go all around them, you know, let's get, let's get to the point so people understand. You going to pay more, you ain't going to pay more, and what are you getting more? Because I haven't seen people that's been happy with the service that they're getting. I mean, everybody, I, I call our office and we refer them. They come out with a ruler and say, oh, you just one inch, now it's on your property. If you've just been one more inch, we could have helped you. So I want to look at how can we creatively keep the cost down? I've asked the administrator and Holly's team to also look at if there's something we can do possibly creatively to keep the cost down. I mean, I, I've got a, a theme right now, and it's keep the cost down because people can't afford it, but maybe there's some creative ways. ARPA, we can still keep our bond rating and some other things, but keep it down on the taxpayers. I'm also scared to ask this next question, so I'm going to ask to get it in writing because I don't want to go all around the world. I want to know what projects that we had slated that we could, I remember before we had a meeting, there were some projects, whether it was COVID or other things, we couldn't get to that year. What's the list of them so I could just read them myself? What were the lists we didn't get to and what we have rolled over to 23? Or did we get everything done and that we wanted to in 22? To make sure I understand about the projects part. I understand it's two different components I'm looking at, but that would help me in, in the interest of time and the people that are hopefully still watching, I'd like to get that in writing. So I'll turn that back over to you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I just had a quick comment about the, the capital program, and I can answer the question about projects at the same time. I just wanted to add that, you know, the biggest variable in all of this is the, the capital program when we look at the, the next five years. The operating budget itself is, you know, very small, there's not much wiggle room. I mean, it costs what it costs, and, you know, we can't really reduce the cost without reducing level of service. So that's something that's, there's not much room to change, but the, the capital program, we don't know what we have for Phase Two for consent decree, still under negotiation. And I just want to point out that the county is in the, in the lead. County is leading those negotiations. So, you know, it's not, it's not us making the decision of what it's going to cost in the future. That's, that's the biggest part of it. And as far as the projects in this, for this year, we are on track to, I believe, every one of them, all but one, which is a $150,000, very small pump station elimination project, gets deferred until next year, but every other project has, has moved forward, has been appropriated this year, which is better than we've done in the past, and I'm happy to present that information.
Thank you. If you could give it to me right, it'd be great.
Sure.
So I can, somebody call me and say, hey, it's been done.
Okay, that's what, it's in what we call the variance report, and we produce it monthly, and I'll get that to you.
Get me in a thing called the Word Doc Report.
All right.
So I can forward it to the people. Thank you.
And you said all, every other project has been appropriated. You didn't say completed.
No, I mean, our projects take five to six years to be completed, so we're still constructing projects that were approved three, four years ago for design or planning.
So you mean that the money has been allocated for those projects?
Yeah, what, yeah, more or less.
Okay. Commissioner Drew House?
Yeah, and I also wanted to request some information. One of them was an updated chart on the projects. We, we need to have a better understanding of what the status is of the projects that we've allocated money for before we pass this budget. The other thing I would like to see is a, a chart of personnel because we're looking at the operating budget, and so want to have a better understanding year over year, maybe for the last five years, related to employment. So we've got that in front of us. I think, you know, MSD used to provide information regarding rates, and, and if, if there was a recommendation that was an increase, and it's always an increase, then there was an analysis about what that would mean by way of a rate increase. I think that's obviously helpful information as we try to understand where we are going to land, because I, I, I think I do speak for all three of us, we're very sensitive to the conversation about rate increases. It's something that all three of us would like to avoid if we can. So without an analysis about, you know, any of the numbers related to the operating budget, because, because as I, I see it, there aren't that many variables, as you say, related to the operating budget. Debt payment is solid, you know, you can't do much about that. SBU is something that we, we want to fully fund. So the variables become the non-personnel and the personnel budget. And so if we're looking at a personnel budget recommendation from MSD, the question I think this commission is asking is, what does that mean by way of rate increases? And what would we have to do to fund it? That's the question. So I would appreciate an analysis. I've got some interim analysis in front of me related to rate increases, but in, as we move forward, I mean, it was helpful information. I mean, none of us want to talk about rate increases, but it is helpful for us to better understand it so that we know what we want to approve of by way of the operating budget.
So can I just respond?
Yeah.
Yeah. We did perform the same analysis we performed every other year. We have a draft rate study. It's called a comprehensive revenue, whatever, it's long title, 20, 30 pages, and that was provided to the county team in October. There was some requests that we run different scenarios, again, adjusting the assumptions based on how much, you know, finance, public financing is used versus issuance of debt. So an update was requested, and we provided, without a full update of the report, we just provided some tables. But again, I just want to be clear, we've given that information, and it was our understanding that those discussions would continue. It's just that we didn't have the feedback, and, and again, it's, we can run the model with any assumptions and inputs that we put into it. So we can present different scenarios, and we're still kind of running through that with the county's financial advisors.
Well, I, I've got some preliminary information in front of me that was provided to me by the county. So I've, I've got some of that. What I'm suggesting, though, is that in the report, if, if an increase is being asked for, then there's an associated cost to that related to rates. And so I think it would be helpful for this public document to, to say something about that, because this document doesn't exist in a vacuum. I mean, there, there's the other side of how are we going to pay for this if there's an increase that's being asked for? So that's, I'm asking for it to be in the official document. I, I feel like it used to be, like a few years ago. It, it wasn't last year, and it's not this year, so I'm just asking that that be provided. And so as, you know, and I know these are ongoing conversations. I think we've all had meetings with, related to MSD and the CIP and the operating budget, and so we're still going to be sorting through this. But a couple of other things related to spend. So I, I know that the request is up from last year. Did you spend down the money that was allocated for last year? Or I, I think maybe, because we're not finished with the year, what percentage of the budget that was allocated last year do you expect to spend?
So I, I do have that information. So for 2022, you know, we tried to get the most up-to-date financial report. We give those to usually quarterly. But for the, and this is really just looking at the personnel and the non-personnel. So we're looking at, on the personnel side, you know, close to 95% of the budget, using that, which is very close to what was allocated.
2021?
No, I'm sorry, 2022, present year.
Okay, present year.
Yeah, so present year of the personnel appropriation, we, we believe will be very close to 95% of that. Remaining unknowns, it's kind of some holiday overtime. It's really weather dependent, of course, weather events in general, and then pending lump sum payments for retirees that is also, you know, not determined until later. But the personnel is pretty well set by now, and we're going to be somewhere in the 92% to 95% spent for the non-personnel appropriation. I don't have percentages here, but again, I think we believe that there's going to be somewhere between 1 million and at most 3 million, and Joseph can correct me if I'm wrong, remaining in the non-personnel budget this year. So really a much different year than we had in 2020 and 2021 where we were hamstrung with the pandemic on, on both personnel and non-personnel and inability to really use the budgets we had.
Put that into a percentage?
Let me have Joseph give me the correct numbers because, for the non-personnel.
Yeah.
Do you have the non-personnel?
I don't have the percentage, but I have the numbers.
A ballpark, ballpark would be helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
One second. So for the non-personnel budget for MSD for 2022, the total that was appropriated was As of 11/30, $61,015,531 has already been committed. Of the remaining balance, we have approximately $3 million. That's pending commitments, so that's money that we've set aside to be committed to our, our friends at the Finance Department downtown so that we can put in orders for parts or ensure that there's money set aside for utility bills that are pending that are due for 2022. And so of the remaining, 1.7 million, most of that's being held for potential contingencies, so break-fix issues that might occur from collections of treatment needs or other bills that have not yet occurred that we would encumber before the end of, end of the year.
So you expect to be, is it fair, I'm, I'm going to ballpark it for you. So is it fair to say in the high 90s? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
I wouldn't be surprised, Commissioner Drew House, if almost all of it is encumbered by, before the end of the year.
So we'll call that near 100%. Okay. A couple of other things. The, you've talked, I'm sorry, for Diana. I, I think, I don't, I'm not sure. So you've talked in the past about restructuring and about how, I think this board, and I, I will speak for myself here, I, I've always said, we, you know, we want to get these projects done, and, you know, when we, we need to have a fee increase, we'll do a fee increase, but we've had this large reserve that we have now spent down, and I, I know we're at that kind of tipping point right now. We were talking a lot about reserves today, but there is, there are financial analyses being done about the reserve also in this fund and what is a reasonable reserve, what a contingency should look like, and we're really close to that right now. And so we have spent down over the years so that we didn't have to have a rate increase because we didn't want to put the burden on the rate payers. So under that context, you have talked in the past about restructuring and about getting projects out more quickly, which I, I think is a good thing. Unfortunately, that's going to cost money, but I didn't hear you talk about restructuring related to this budget. So can you expand on that? Is that something that is not anticipated next year, or is that incorporated here in this budget? this budget?
So we, we act.
Can I interject?
Uh huh, go ahead.
If it's okay. Jeff Capel, who's been here almost three and a half hours, says he has like five minutes, he has the, maybe for parking or whatever. If he could speak, he wanted to speak just about the budget real quick.
I don't have anywhere to go.
Okay.
Yep, appreciate that, because I still got to do lunch and get to a meeting a little bit later. So the budget issue I wanted to talk about is, several years ago, I was at a budget hearing where I talked about the Port Authority, and about how the commissioners need to make sure that they're supervising the Port Authority and keeping them on task with what they're supposed to be doing. And it's, and I, at that point, I had said, you know, either do that or defund them, not this in-between. And unfortunately, none of the above seems to have been happening. I watched the, the meeting a week or two ago where Hamilton County taxpayers had to pony up $5 million to the port because they don't know how to do their jobs correctly. The entire incident there just illustrates, raises the question of, of why are we paying them to do what they're, to do things? As far as getting the property in the first place, we're paying them to have the expertise to make those contacts and land the property. Instead, one local developer did an end run around them, got the property instead, and then the port had to negotiate with that developer to acquire the rights to the property. So there was the, the finder's fee of 2.5 million, and then there was the $5 million penalty if certain things didn't happen right. Well, then at that point, why was the port not able to write and execute the contract correctly? We pay them to have the expertise to do those things. So, and that's not even their greatest hit. When they were involved in the FC Cincinnati deal, they got involved in that so that the billionaires who owned FC Cincinnati would not have to pay county taxes on their $200 million stadium. So let's look at this. The Port Authority helps FC Cincinnati not pay their taxes, then shortly after that, the county commissioners raise our sales tax. Then a couple weeks ago, we have to pay them a $5 million penalty because, we, we had to pay a $5 million penalty because the port couldn't do their jobs correctly, and now here at this meeting, we can't get our full property tax rollback. So the port messes up, we pay for it. So again, it just gets us back to, we either need to supervise them and get them on mission, or simply stop sending them money, because at this point, we're paying them money to cost us even more money in the long run. So that's what I wanted to say, and I do appreciate you letting me get this out before I had to go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Okay, sorry.
That's fine.
Yep. So Commissioner Dreyhouse, I think your question is just regarding potential reorganization in our, in terms of our capital, the delivery of our capital program.
You talked about restructuring, getting projects done more quickly and out the door.
Yes. So we have done some things already this year. Well, I think they'll be put in place at the beginning of next year in terms of restructuring. We, we've already been working on a whole, a new capital program and how we deliver our capital projects. So that's been in place for a little over a year now, and so there's a little bit of a learning curve, but that's where these reports that, you know, may show a project schedule has shifted. A lot of that is, is new to us. It's, we didn't used to track our projects in that way and hold our PMs to these schedules. So, so, so that is already in place in terms of how we're tracking our performance and reporting out on our projects. But in terms of other restructuring that we have just recently put in place, in term, and I could defer to Ryan, he can fill in the blanks for me, but, so in our engineering division, we have project managers, and at present, our project managers are split into two different roles. Project managers that take the project in the beginning phases of planning and design, and it's kind of handed off to the construction team, and the construction manager then takes the project from there during the construction phase and works with the contractors. Because we are not in a nice, perfect balance, we have, we're kind of heavier on the construction side than we need to be. We have a lot more projects in the planning and design phase. Our project managers are overloaded, and so we're restructuring the division so that a project will start with one man, a project manager, and these are our engineers, just to be clear when I say PM. So one engineer from start to finish will manage that project from planning, design, construction phase. We still have a construction inspection group, but, you know, the, the project manager will be delivering from start to finish. And then perhaps Ryan can chime in on the other changes, because it's a little more than that, but they'll all be effective January 1, I believe. They've been notified, so.
Yeah, so what we're doing right now at MSD is cost neutral, using the people that we have to, to manage things better, and really ramp up, or anticipate the Phase 2 ramp up, or the start of Phase 2. I, I pulled up an organization table from 2010 the other day, which is, corresponds to the beginning of Phase 1, and just looked at what our engineering resources were at that time. At that time, we had about 130 MSD employees in engineering, and about 50 staff supplementation contract employees. Today, we are at just under 110 MSD employees in engineering, and probably only about 10 contract employees at MSD. So we're about 50, 50 people less than where we were at the beginning of Phase 1. So we don't know exactly when Phase 2 is going to start, but we need to be as ready for that as possible, and that's, the changes we're making now, they're cost neutral, but we're trying to get ourselves in a position to take on that extra workload when it comes, whether that's in six months from now, or a year from now. And I think I mentioned earlier this year when I was in here, we will have to ramp up, we will have to add staff. It's a challenging environment to do that, especially on short notice. So it's something that we're looking at, and we're just trying to be as efficient as possible.
But that's where the, the chart for personnel is going to be really helpful.
Right.
Because there's an increased cost here for personnel, so it's going to be helpful for us to understand where those dollars are going.
And I agree, and I, I think, you mentioned the past five years, but I think for engineering in particular, because this consent decree phase, you know, the first one was 10 years, we're looking at potential next 10-year phase, it's cyclical, so really, the best thing to compare it to is 2010, when we were starting Phase 1, to look where we're going to be at the beginning of a Phase 2.
If, if you want to do a 10-year chart, that's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Just, just some, some kind of context for, for the employees.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and lastly, and I, because I, I know we've been here a while, I, I, we've talked a lot about impervious surface in the past, at past meetings. You've talked about how so many of the folks that call in and have flooding in their basements are not eligible for the SBU program because it's overland flooding or, or something different. And so I am hoping that, that the work with stormwater and MSD will be a collective body of work because of the, the interactions between those two things. And if we could get further along related to the impervious surface question, that also would have an impact on the budget. And so we, we don't have that, but I'm hoping that, you know, next time we talk about a budget, that we've got stormwater and MSD working together to try to figure out what we're going to do related to impervious surface, and what the impact will be to the ratepayers or the constituents that suffer from this flooding that is not SBU, rather, it's overland, and if there's any relief that can be provided there. So I know those are ongoing conversations, but I, I really do think we need to be more aggressive about trying to ramp that work up. Thanks.
Thank you. The only thing I would, I would just comment to, to note it, I, I think in addition to stormwater, when you're talking about, you know, another agency, and, and we've started doing this, is we really need to look at opportunities in transportation, both city and state, and we're doing that now, so we talk about it another time, but collaboration with ODOT really provides a lot of opportunities as well.
So I have a couple comments, and I heard Ryan say in 2010, and you look now, there are 50 people less than what you were, you had before. That doesn't necessarily mean that you needed those 50 people. I mean, that's how it was then. I think oftentimes, we look at how it was, and, you know, trying to get back to that. I'm not saying get back to 50 more people, but here it is 2022, and you guys are, according to you and the organization, working efficiently. You could use more staff, of course, but to say that we lost 50 doesn't really, doesn't do anything for me. Maybe you didn't need 50, maybe you only needed 30. So that, that's not like a, a deal breaker for me. And, and then secondly, I heard you say, Diana, when Vice President Reese asks, is there a CFO? And, and so I heard you kind of curtly say, does the county want to pay for a CFO? I, I thought that was a, a little inappropriate, and also, I don't want the county to be blamed for you not having a CFO. If you chose to do it that way for the last few years, fine, but I thought that was not necessary to say, because you can always present a, a recommendation, we need a CFO now. So I, I heard, and I thought, and I, so what I'm saying basically is, we don't need to be adversarial. We have to work together in order to make this thing work. This is a big organization, lots of money going in, and so we need to have respect on both sides of the table, and so I just needed to say that. That's all I have to say as it relates to this discussion.
Thank you. And, and I, I don't mean any disrespect, I, I don't feel that we need a CFO at, in terms of a title. That role has to be fulfilled, and I think that we can look at the way we were organized, sometimes when somebody's in a position, because that's the level they came in at, that, that individual in particular had responsibilities beyond finances. He was overseeing the IT division, he was overseeing the entire admin, HR, so it was really more about a managerial role at MSD than it was the business of finances. So I, I don't, I didn't mean to be curt, but I do think the distinction is, is exactly the point you're making, Commissioner Dumas, which is, it's, it's not, it's not always apples to apples. I can't just say, well, we used to have one. I mean, that, again, that was a title. If you look at that, that, the, the work that's being performed, performing that work today, that work was always performed using outside financial advisors and financial teams, and not entirely by one individual at MSD, although he carried the title of CFO. It also is work that has been done in years past by a county employee. We at one point in time had a county employee called a comptroller at MSD. Today, we don't have a comptroller, but we have a whole county team of financial advisors that we work with. So the titles change, but I, I would disagree that that is a, a gap or something we need. So I would not request that, because I'm fulfilling that, that obligation with the team we have.
But, but do you understand when you say you don't feel you need a CFO, and then you say, does the county want to pay for a CFO? Either you need it or you don't. It's contradictory.
I understand.
So, all right. We'll move forward, because we've got a little bit of more, more work to do. We have a, oh, I need to close the public hearing. Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we have a public hearing for the 2023 Administrator's Recommended Budget. Mr. Ludow.
Madam President, so I'll defer to you. I, I believe that some of the folks who may have spoken earlier were probably doing that in the context of the, of the budget. So we've opened the public hearing. I don't know whether we still have the public here. I, I'm happy to do the same brief presentation I did a couple days ago. Happy just to open the hearing and see if there's anyone here who wants to speak. I'll defer entirely to you, given the hour.
Sure. I, I would like to open the hearing for anyone that's here to speak related to the 2023 budget, because this is our public hearing time, well, after time, but, is anyone here to speak to the 2020, 23 budget? Okay, hearing done, I'd like to.
One, one suggestion, just, I don't know whether we can ask the clerk to just incorporate the, the comments that were given earlier. I think there were some comments earlier on that were probably intended for the budget hearing. So clerk, hurry, I don't know if we can take those comments and just, and refer to them in the record as being a part of the, of the budget hearing.
Sure.
Very good. And we will have another public hearing December the 6th, which is a Tuesday at the Board of Election, in the evening at 6:30. So if you'd like to come out, or if you'd like to call in, or connect with us, we certainly would love to hear from you. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And also note that the budget needs to be signed off, approved by this board by the 15th of December. Okay. So we're going to go to our regular agenda items, our engineers here. How are you?
I'm doing very well. How are you guys tonight?
Good, good.
All right, I just have four items tonight. I am saying tonight, it's still this afternoon, it just feels like tonight. First, item number one is a resolution authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to execute preliminary legislation for Miami Road and Galbraith Road intersection with the Ohio Department of Transportation. The City of Madera has a project, they got funding from the state to do the improvement to Miami and Galbraith Road intersection. ODOT will be managing that project. This basically gives them a permit to work in county right away, and there's no cost involved to the county.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing done, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two?
Item two and three go together. Item two is a resolution for the, allowing the county engineer to provide amenities for the calendar year 2023 in accordance with Attorney General Opinion 82006. This allows us to provide amenities for our annual township meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about item two or three?
No.
Okay, hearing done, I'd like to make a motion to approve items two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to employ labor, purchase materials, and proceed by force account in the maintenance, repair, construction, and reconstruction of roads, bridges, and culverts for 2023. This is basically what allows us to do work with our own forces on the county infrastructure.
Thank you. I like seeing those zeros, so. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have before you consent agenda items, items five through 33. We normally go through some of them, unless there's some questions or comments as it relates to any of those items. Vice President Reese?
I just had, item number 12 is a budget adjustment, and just if the administrator can, can highlight those adjustments, that's all.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, happy to do so. It was the, actually, the item I just walked down to get, but I, it's not listed the same. I've got item 12 here, but it's item 11, so I think, Leslie, if I could get that budget adjustment item, I'd have to walk through it. Was anticipating that question, so, so thank you. Yeah, so there are several budget adjustments here. So some of them are related to, as we get to the end of the year, we always have fixes to departmental budgets, just depending upon transfers internal to a budget, or, or additional appropriations necessary. In this particular case, we have several departments, especially as a result of market adjustments that were done during the course of the year, some additional appropriations for labor, so we have that within the Facilities Department, we have that in the Prosecutor's Office, there were some additional vacation payouts and, that were necessary in order to, and sick leave payouts to, for, for that particular office. We had the same thing with our MSD Oversight Department and Municipal Court. There was some additional appropriations to pay for technical support, interpreters' services, and judges' dues. There was an additional amount for an employee contract payout in mental health and recovery services. We had additional appropriations due to bargaining wage adjustments and vacation and sick leave payouts in the Sheriff's Office. We had some overtime costs in the, in our stadia and parking department, and within environmental services, we had a transfer within our, we get a federal BioWatch grant that provides hazardous air monitoring, and there was a transfer within that particular grant to provide training to area health departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other items?
No.
You have a question?
Okay.
I'd like to motion, make a motion to approve items five through 33.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.